Good evening and welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education Workshop on April 1st, 2021. We will begin with a silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Ruffin, I give you the floor.
Thank you, Commissioner. So tonight, and a very heavy heart, we remember in prayer a man who has been very special to all of us. Robert Henry passed away Saturday, and we send our love and condolences to his lovely wife and family, who are deeply grieving and in deep sorrow at this time. Mr. Henry served as the temporary deputy superintendent appointed by the Board of Education in October 13th of 2017 through August 30th of 2018. And after I became superintendent, he continued to consult with Waterbury Public Schools until most recently. And it's with a heavy heart that we now come together, missing a very dear friend. That man is a success, leaves the world better than he found it, who has never lacked appreciation of earth's beauty or failed to express it, who looked for the best in others and gave the best he had. Well, this is a saying by Bessie Stanley. I know Robert Henry touched everyone's life, who is on this meeting, as well as so many others. And we remember him tonight. We remember a confidant, I remember a confidant, a friend, fellow superintendent, one who touched the lives of Waterbury, as well as so many people across the state of Connecticut and other places. And so in our moment of silence, I wish to my very dear friend and any board member who would like to share also a famous saying that he left written on a flipboard in my office when I entered it. "Pura vida, pure life, enjoy life." Rest in peace, Mr. Robert Henry.
Now, Vice President, if I may.
Okay, we're in a moment of silence. Okay, who is speaking?
Commissioner Van Storn.
I'm sorry?
Commissioner Van Storn.
All right, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. Mr. Henry and I had a unique connection through soccer, of all things. We spoke often about that. But he and I also had a connection with education. So first and foremost, he's a gentleman. His dedication to education is is there for all the Western though. So thank you, Mr. Henry. And thank you, thank you.
Sure, is there anyone else that would like to say just a few words? All right, I don't see. Okay, Commissioner Orso.
Yes.
Thank you.
I just want to send my condolences to the family. When I was purchasing director, I dealt with Mr. Henry, and he was such a professional. He was just great to work with. We sat in his office many times and we talked. And I was deeply, deeply saddened by his passing. And the world and the city is in sorrow, and I again offer my condolences to the family.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there anyone else that would like to say a few words? Okay, I can't see.
I think Juanita is, but she's on mute.
Yeah, I can't. Okay, thank you, Mayor. I can't see because the picture is up. Juanita? Okay. Juanita, you're on mute.
Yes, I would just like to send my condolences out to Mr. Henry's family as well, and my fellow commissioners, the office staff. He was a great guy. He'll be sorely missed. And I think he was the only one that still felt like I was a kid, because when he would talk to me, he would say, "What's a kid?" And I would say, "Why?" "I wish my body felt like a kid, but I'm doing okay, Mr. Henry." So I will miss him. I will miss him a lot. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Commissioner Melissa Serrano O'Donnell, please.
Thank you. I definitely want to give my condolences to his family. I will definitely miss his surprise text messages or phone calls that he would randomly, you know, do to check up on us. He actually had agreed to officiate my bail notice for my 25th anniversary last year, but due to the COVID, we were not able to. So he's irreplaceable, and he is going to be highly missed. And my heart goes out to the family and my thoughts and prayers are with them.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else?
If I may, Madam Vice President, I'm sorry. If I was not able to express how I really felt, I apologize, but he is such, such a tremendous confidant and human being. I apologize. I just wanted to let people know that he's special. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I just, this is normally not how we, this was not in the agenda, but I felt it was important for us to, you know, to speak about Mr. Henry. You know, I gave my comments in the paper, but it's just a shock to hear about his passing. And I think, as I believe I stated in the paper, that the best thing we can do here in Waterbury is to take care of the students. I think that's what he would want us to do and continue to do and stay focused on the students. So rest in peace, Mr. Henry. And with that, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone together, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. All right, so we have, just want to say this, we have an action-packed agenda here, a lot to cover. So we will get started. You know, if you have any comments, please just wave, and I will, you know, hopefully try to recognize you. If I miss you, please do not take that as an offense. So work with me tonight, please. So we will begin, first of all, there is no public speaking, from what I understand, just to check that. All right, so we will move on to item one of the committee of the whole Waterbury Promise and the Mayor O'Leary and Dr. Ruffin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Vice President Harvey. Welcome to all of you. I know that you heard during the State of the City address that it was our intention to pursue some form of a promise program for our students graduating high school and wishing to attend community college or other colleges and universities. So for about the last year and a half, Commissioner Harvey, Dr. Ruffin, Mr. Will Clark, myself and some of my staff have been researching Waterbury Promise programs, excuse me, Promise programs, not only here in the state of Connecticut. Of course, New Haven has a Promise program, and Hartford has a Promise program that are extraordinarily successful in helping offset college costs and allowing students with financial need to be able to participate in going to college through those programs. There are other Promise programs throughout the country, quite frankly, that we are looking at very, very carefully. So, you know, the challenge for Waterbury is this. We've been dealing very frequently with the Mr. Richard Sugarman, who is the CEO of the Hartford Promise Program. In Hartford, quite frankly, one of the primary contributors to the Promise Program, a major contributor to the Promise Program is the insurance industry in Hartford, specifically the Travelers and others. And in New Haven, Yale is the Promise Program. You know, our challenge here in Waterbury, of course, is, you know, we don't have the luxury of the insurance industry. We don't have the luxury of Yale University. So we're looking at this with very realistic and open eyes. Both New Haven and Hartford offer students up to $5,000 each year, and as I said, it's made an amazing difference in their lives. You know, we are very serious about this and have spent a considerable amount of time doing research on this. And it's our feeling that we, through the advice of Mr. Sugarman and others that are familiar with the Promise Program, it's going to take us probably a full three years to fundraise and get to where we need to be. So where is that? Well, we need anywhere from $3.5 million to $5 million to start the Promise Program. We may not be in a position to give out up to $5,000 for each of our students in the beginning of this program, depending on how well we do fundraising, but we will start a Promise Program. And whether it's $5,000, or $4,000, or $3,000, or $2,500 for that matter, our intention is to start a Waterbury Promise Program. And it's also my intention as mayor to fund the program partially with surplus monies from the last couple of budgets that we have. I've been very fortunate here in Waterbury, as you know. We've ended each year in my administration with surpluses, some small, some large. But I think that, you know, that because of the absence of the Yales and the Travelers, I think that, you know, we might all agree that it's a good idea. It's an investment in our children and it's an investment in our future. So who would be eligible for this Promise Program? So the criteria that is pretty much the same for most of the Promise Programs is, you know, obviously you have to be a resident of the city of Waterbury, in this case, since the ninth grade. You know, and so your high school years, you have to be a full-time resident of the city of Waterbury. You have to have a GPA or a cumulative GPA of 3.0, at least. You have to have a 93% or better attendance record during high school. And of course, you know, obviously if someone has suffered some sort of an illness with the long-term surgery and things like that, you know, everything is taken into consideration. The students would begin using the scholarship within one year of their high school graduation. And, you know, it's, college-going Promise Scholars must remain in good standing with their college or university, as defined by those institutions. And so it's kind of fun. This is a major, major undertaking, a huge project. I'm excited about it. I think, I know Commissioner Harvey is, I know Dr. Ruffin is, and I know that Will Clark has been an integral, integral part of helping us learn about different programs. You know, not all of this is set in stone, but I wanted to give you this information because I thought it was time for the board to know that, you know, we're identifying the current freshman class in our high schools. And by the way, this would include Parochial High School. So it looks like Holy Cross would qualify at this point, and you all are familiar with what's happening with Sacred Heart, so. And, you know, I believe very, very strongly that we have gone ahead and hired Carney and Torrance attorney Anne Zucker, is, has done 501(c)(3) work for us. The Waterbury Promise Program, of course, will be applying for 501(c)(3) status. The Connecticut Community Foundation has been very supportive of this effort. And I have met as recently as this morning with Julie Lockren, the CEO, who is very excited as well, particularly because of the commitment from the city. She was very concerned, and I was too, about how we would go about, you know, raising those kinds of dollars without, you know, the huge corporate buy-in that the other two Connecticut programs enjoy. But I think, you know, I look, we're very, very creative around here, and we do pretty well in fundraising for a lot of different nonprofits and others. So I think we're going to go to work at this, hit our feet with the ground we'll be running. We do have a job description for a CEO provided by both New Haven and Hartford Promise. And we have to put together a board of directors and maybe even an advisory board. So we're seeking, you know, names for people. I've gotten several names already for people who are interested in being either on the advisory board or the Board of Directors. I would like, obviously, a liaison from the Board of Education. And what I'm hoping for on the Board of Directors is a very diverse board. So that would include people from every demographic of our city. It would also include, you know, the manufacturing world, the hospitals will be an integral part of this. And I'm hoping for businesses like Webster Bank and ION Bank, TD Bank North. And I am starting to set up meetings with these folks as early as next week to have some legitimate discussions. We feel strongly that the, we as a group that have been meeting, you know, most recently feel strongly that the city's buy-in is critical to get the buy-in from people that I just mentioned that we're going to be asking. So, you know, we're excited, but we, look, we recognize this is an enormous undertaking. It's not just a little undertaking, this is huge. And the superintendent has been very, very supportive, believes in this. And Superintendent, would you like to say some words?
Very little. I'm very excited about it. And I believe that the work ahead is really going to be affecting our freshman class moving up. And as soon as we have a structure, we are ready and poised to tell our students and our families so that they can know the expectations and they can be prepared in four years.
Yeah, and so we feel it's so important to get to our freshmen, you know, sometime in the near future, obviously, before the school year ends. And hopefully, hopefully, they'll all be back to school before the school year ends so we can have this conversation face-to-face. We'll also be meeting with, obviously, parents and others. But, you know, we want to let them know, say, you know, listen, you guys, you know, we want you to be successful. We want you to know what the criteria is for this program. So we did do some research, and it's pretty interesting. Right now, based on the data that we've been able to pull out of our files, you know, right now with the criteria that I just described, we have about 300 people in our now senior class who would qualify for a Promise Program if we had one. And that's right in line with New Haven and Hartford, and their districts are actually larger than ours. So I feel really good about that. And, you know, I think it's really a very interesting, very interesting thing. The other thing, you know, I wanted to make sure that you guys understand, because I'm not sure that, everyone does, you know, we worked really, really hard to, with the University of Connecticut, to get that Allied Health Program designation down here on the branch. And it took a couple of years and a lot of meetings. And, you know, I am very grateful and will always be grateful to a guy, you know, a couple of members of the Board of Trustees, who were really amazing and getting it going for us. And, you know, I'm really, one individual I need to point out is a fellow by the name of Mr. Tom Ritter. Tom Ritter was the former Speaker of the House for two terms, oh, I don't know, a couple decades ago. He's a member of the Board of Trustees at the University of Connecticut. And, you know, we were kind of spinning our wheels trying to get this designation for quite some time and had a face-to-face meeting with Mr. Ritter and showed him the data and the statistics and the demographics of our children here in Waterbury. And he really was amazing in getting this on their agenda for their Board of Trustees and ultimate approval by their president. And, you know, we really, his son currently, by the way, Matthew Ritter, is the now Speaker of the House. So we're really, really, we're lucky to have him assist us so much, and I'm really grateful for the time that he spent meeting with us and getting this done. But, you know, what we learned through this collection of data for this program, for the Allied Health Program, is that so many of our kids, so many of our kids go to UConn, and once they, you know, got past the two years, well, guess what? They would go to stores, except that there was one major problem. They didn't have the money to go to stores. They didn't have the money for room and board, and they didn't have the transportation funds to make the commute, which is an impossible commute. So, you know, that was really the beginning of the eye-opening experience for all of us, you know, in pursuing this Promise Program, because we have so many children. But the four-year designation, let me just say this. We went from four students in the Allied Health Program last year to 44 this year. Forty-four students are in the Allied Health Program now, because it's a four-year program. And they can do all four years and get their bachelor degree right here on East Main Street at the UConn branch. And so it's pretty cool. The other thing I wanted to mention before I, and I know you've got a robust agenda, and I'm not going to take up much more of your time, but the one thing I did want to mention to you is that there are, through the studies of the Promise Program, we've learned so much about how engaged our own Connecticut colleges and universities are. So if you have a Promise Program, in many cases, they may not match the $5,000 or up to $5,000. In some cases, they're actually giving room and board in some colleges, giving it to a Promise student. So what an enormous opportunity that is, right? And by the way, the University of Connecticut is one of those, as well as Eastern and Western. And then there's other colleges and universities within the state that have been very supportive and very generous to the Hartford and New Haven Promise kids. And that generosity will pass on to the Waterbury kids as well. So I'm really excited about it. I'm grateful for everyone's research on this and ambition. And, you know, it's going to be a work in progress, but we'll keep the board fully informed in how we're doing. And, you know, someone had mentioned, and listen, if we were able to start the program sooner, you know, I would love to do that. And maybe, just maybe, some of this American Recovery Act money, maybe, I don't know, maybe could be used. We don't know what the rules with this American Recovery Act money is just yet, but I think it's a pretty good investment. But we'll have to wait and see. But, you know, Richard is really cautioning us to go slow and easy in the beginning, because it's going to take time to build up the relationships with the prospective donors. And that's the way they did it in Hartford. You know, they started with a freshman class and said, listen, you guys, in three and a half years, we're going to have Promise Program for you. And so, you know, absent anybody hitting the lottery or, you know, some great circumstance, it'll probably take us that long. But I think the promising thing is, is that our students will know how hard we're working toward getting them into the colleges and universities of their choice. So that's all I have for you on the Promise Program. I'm happy to answer any questions if I can. And I will tell you that the commitment from the city will be very sizable. And I'll leave it at that. I don't want to tell you exactly, because some of it is based on how big our surplus is in the current fiscal year. But it will be very sizable, and I think you'll all be very pleased.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, Commissioner Stengel? Vice President Harvey, I think Juanita had her hand up first. Please go to her first. Okay, I think Commissioner Sweeney actually had her hand up. Oh, I didn't see that. You okay? All right, Commissioner Hernandez?
Okay.
Okay. Sorry, Charles. Mayor O'Leary, you said that the parochial schools will be included, well, Holy Cross. But you also said that it was for students that lived in Waterbury. Not a lot of, well, there are a lot of kids from Waterbury that go to Holy Cross, but what happens if one of those students is an out-of-towner? Are they not included? Because do you have to live in Waterbury?
That's correct.
Okay.
You have to live in Waterbury. This program is being funded by Water, in part, with Board of Alderman approval, obviously, by Waterbury taxpayer money. And so, you know, one of the things, Juanita, that is behind the Promise Programs in Hartford and New Haven is to keep our kids in Waterbury and to keep their kids in Hartford and New Haven. And so that's, yeah, you definitely have to be, and you have to be a resident of Waterbury your entire high school, your entire high school, your four years in high school.
Okay, thank you. That's great. Loving it.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Stango?
Okay, thank you. Um, Mayor, you mentioned in your presentation about the, uh, guidelines, for the students with the grade average and the, and the residency and the attendance. Did you mention a financial ceiling on that? Do they have to meet financial guidelines?
Different, uh, different Promise Programs, Commissioner Stango, have, uh, different ideas on that. Some do go by, uh, you know, the FAFFIS, um, formula. Um, that's a work in progress. Um, we, obviously, we want to target those children, um, who are in the most need and have the ability, um, the academic ability uh, to go on. And, um, so I don't, don't have an answer for that just yet, Charlie. Um, but I will tell you that we will be having plenty of discussions with the members of the Board of Education. Uh, and along this, uh, along this journey. And, uh, and we would ask that all of you weigh in. And I'll have a lot more data for you all, uh, in the up and coming, uh, couple of months, uh, comparing one Promise Program to the other. How they do it, how they meet that, you know, what's the family's need. You know, there's a lot of different, um, avenues involved. And, um, I believe, and I don't know if Will is on, but I do not believe, uh, that there is any financial component in the New Haven Promise. And I haven't quite figured it out yet in the Hartford Promise, but.
Uh, that, that's correct, Mayor. You're, you're right. There's none in New Haven. And I believe that also is true of Hartford. It's just the residency requirements, the grades, the attendance, and then everyone is eligible. Hartford is the last dollar in. So they do look at other scholarships the kids get first, and then they basically make up the, the, the difference of the balance up to the 5,000. But there's no financial requirement that excludes anybody based on income.
Thank you, Will. Did that answer your question, Charlie?
It does, Mayor. And, and one more question, if I might. With the, with the, uh, the 5,000, does the student have to go to school within the state of Connecticut? Or can they take that anywhere?
Well, that's another very good question. There are different Promise Programs do it differently. Will, if you want to talk a little bit more. Will is an expert on New Haven and, and probably an expert on Hartford as well. Go ahead, Will.
Yeah, it, it, Mayor, you, you hit it on the head that they, they do it different ways. And we've certainly explored, uh, different avenues. The New Haven Promise, um, has the most bang for the buck focused on Connecticut colleges. And they've done that, uh, state universities and so forth. And then some in-state schools, out-of-state private schools, not so much. Uh, Hartford's essentially is the 5,000 wherever you go. They have some limits versus, um, for-profit and, and so forth. Um, and I think we've got to think about in Waterbury what works for us. We've got a great partnership with Post, uh, already. Uh, and that may be something we want to make sure remains included, that, that support would go there. Um, but you could do it a lot of ways. I think the ones that have more of that 5,000 level, um, that you see is pretty much transferable and can go which, to whichever school you go to. But those distinctions can be drawn in, in, in the details, um, uh, based on a particular program and the focus that, uh, that the group, that the committee chooses to go.
Thank you, Will.
All right. Thank you, Will. Mayor, uh, I think, uh, Commissioner Sweeney had a question?
Sure.
Go ahead, Commissioner. Mayor, Mayor, thank you for all that background, um, very well, um, provided. What about Caner? Waterbury students in Caner and some of our other technical states, high schools? Are they also eligible as long as they live in Waterbury?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry to Caner. I, I should have. I was so focused on the parochial schools.
Yeah.
But yeah, definitely, they would definitely be qualified here.
So basically, the, the main criteria, number one, is that they live in Waterbury.
Right.
Regardless of where they go to school. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All right. Did I see your hand? No, okay. So you hand on. Commissioner Brown, you have anything to say on this?
No, I, I actually, uh, Vice President, um, I did have my hand up.
Okay, I did see it. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, getting served from my voice. Uh, thank you, uh, Commissioner Sweeney. Uh, Caner is near to me for, uh, how we go forward. But yes, we need to make sure we include all. Waterbury isn't. So, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Brown, did you have anything to say?
I, I just am so excited about this, uh, opportunity, Mayor. Thank you very much for, for your leadership on this. I know I had the opportunity to go to the Promise Conference in New Haven with Karen, and it was just amazing. So I know Karen ran, ran with the ball and you took it to the, to the finish line. So I'm very excited about it. Thank you so much.
All right. Thanks, Commissioner Brown. Any other com- comments, questions?
Ashley would like to speak.
All right, Ashley, go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ashley.
Oh, it's all right. So I just, I was wondering, um, regarding, okay, so let's say for the Promise Program, you were to consider finances. Would you be willing to increase the funding for low-income students?
Ashley, that's a great question. Um, as, as it is now, I'm probably already lost enough sleep trying to worry about what funding we will be able to raise. Um, but, you know, look, you know, we have a way of doing business here in this town. And if we have students who, um, are academically, uh, excel, uh, and the Promise, uh, program probably would be, um, the maximum at, that I can see if we were enormously successful in raising money would equal, um, Hartford and New Haven. But let me just say this to you. You know, there's a lot of good people in this town who were, are willing to do a lot of good things for good kids and, uh, kids that are driven. Uh, you know, when we come across a child who is unable to get into, uh, um, college, um, of their choice, only because of a financial restriction, somehow, some way, uh, there's many of us here who try to cull together some money. But the Promise Program, I don't see it exceeding, uh, $5,000. But the good news is, is that when you work in these Promise Program environment, you build up relationships with colleges and universities, just as we have relationships with UConn, Post, and Nuggetuck Valley. And I will tell you that we have gone to the leadership of each of those three schools on, on several occasions when we find a student, um, that is, um, that would be similar to what you're thinking. And they always find a way to get it done. So keep that in the back of your mind.
All right.
Okay.
Ashley?
Yes.
Any other questions?
No, I forgot.
You're okay? Problem. All right. Any other questions, comments? All right, Mayor, my, my comment is I am ecstatic. I, 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 and look, this was an item number 10 on a worksheet from the Advisory Committee. And to see this, here you use words about what a promise, uh, it is just wonderful. Um, New Haven has been in this for a while. I think it's almost 10 years now. Hartford, uh, a little bit less, but nonetheless, um, Waterbury, everybody had their beginning. And this is our beginning. And I look forward to, um, you know, this, this program coming forward for students and that we can help our students, uh, to go on and achieve their, their goals. So I thank you, Mayor, for bringing this forward. Um, and I look forward to what is going to happen in the future. And, um, thank you again.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner. I appreciate it. And thanks for all your help from the very beginning.
Absolutely. Okay, if there are no other comments or questions, uh, we will move on to item number two. Oh, by the way, let me just go back. I, I did not, uh, welcome our students, uh, who are joining us. Ashley had a question and Ms. Ally, would you pronounce your first name, please? Because I know you said something earlier about what you didn't like.
Yeah, you can, you can pronounce it Fatima.
Okay.
Fatima.
Thank you.
Just not Fatima.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. And welcome. Both students. Okay, item number two. Uh, attendance update, Dr. Ruffin. Uh, you will go into the International School Dual Language School Program. Um, B, you will give an update on the reimagining education think tank. And C, update on the strategic plan. You now have the floor.
Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you. Uh, I will have staff that will be presenting on, uh, all three. Uh, and I will interject as we go along, but the staff has done an amazing job. And so I will ask the, um, staff presenting on the International School Dual Language, uh, to please go first.
Okay. Uh, good evening, Board President, President for the night, uh, Vice President Free, and, uh, Commissioners and Superintendent. Uh, thank you. I'm here joined with, uh, Adella. Uh, and we're going to take you through, uh, you know, this exciting new programming that we have coming, uh, uh, to the Waterbury Public Schools. Uh, I hope I can, you can see my screen. A little thumbs up if you can see it. Okay, good. Thank you. Mr. Orso, I saw yours first, so I'm going to take that as a good sign. So, uh, we've, we've, in a very short amount of time, we've been able uh, to work with all facets of the, of the educational community here, uh, to, to, to design a program uh, for students, um, uh, for pre-K, uh, uh, let me just share here. For pre-K, uh, K and first grade for the upcoming year, uh, we have, uh, uh, designed a program uh, for students that, uh, speaks to the heart of what a dual language is, uh, for students and what, uh, what that means to us. And so, uh, there's some confusion out there, uh, sometimes when we talk about dual language, uh, uh, and bilingual education, T-SOL education, EL, people have heard ESL, that's a, you know, so, so a lot of us are familiar with the acronyms and not necessarily what is the unique aspects of this program. So tonight, uh, uh, what we're going to do for you is, is highlight what is, uh, specifically special about a dual language program. And so, um, I'm going to have Adella, actually, why don't you jump into the research and what we're thinking behind that? And, um, and then what I'll do is, is, is then I'll take people through that website and then I'll show you a video of how we envision it. There is a, a school nearby, um, Amigo School at Cambridge, Massachusetts. And it's a short video, but this is exactly how we envision the school to be as it grows. And so I want to make sure that I give you a visual and, 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 and show you the difference because many of you have visited our bilingual programs. And we want to be clear that this is not a bilingual program. This is a dual-language school designed for English-speaking students, designed for, uh, students, uh, that speak, uh, have a native language other than English. And the goal is by eighth grade that you are completely literate in both languages. And sometimes if you're coming with a third language, uh, like, uh, I use the example of my wife, Lori, to, 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 to Hopeville School. She started speaking Portuguese, ended up being trilingual, um, through, through different mechanisms. And so if you're coming, speaking Albanian or another language, uh, to the Waterbury Public Schools, the, the goal would be for you to be trilingual by the time you leave eighth grade. And we have measures and tests to prove that, that we put into place this year. And so Adella, talk, talk to us a little bit about the research behind why a dual-language school, um, especially here in Waterbury. And then I'd, I'd be happy to take the board through just a quick run-through of our website.
Okay, thank you, Darren. Um, the big difference between a dual-language program and transitional bilingual education is that with your transitional bilingual education, students come in, they may begin with the majority of the, of the instruction being taught in Spanish, but then they transition into English so that the amount of time spent learning Spanish decreases over time. With dual-language education, we develop literacy skills for students in both languages. And what research has shown us is that actually dual-language programs are the most effective in closing the achievement gap. So students who participate in dual-language programs, they gain grade-level academic ability. They develop language and literacy skills in both languages. And they also develop cross-cultural competence along with social skills. I'm another. Not only, the research shows that there are a lot of benefits, not only academic, but also social and emotional. Test results also show that dual-language schools outperform other schools that are similar in demographics within their same states and local schools within the same district. For English learners, dual-language education is the most effective form of bilingual education. And for native English speakers, they often will exceed the performance of their peers participating in monolingual education programs. And nationwide, there has been a large increase in school districts developing dual-language programs because of all these benefits. And then in addition to those benefits, research also shows that becoming bilingual, it delays the onset of Alzheimer's. It promotes, um, cognitive flexibility for students. It increases the level of concentration, which is not typical of monolingual students. Students in dual-language programs develop higher levels of self-esteem and resiliency.
Now I'll unmute myself like I should have muted myself earlier. So I apologize for that. But, um, uh, thank you, Adella. Thank you for providing that. And, uh, so we've created this website for parents to go to, uh, for students to go to learn a little bit more about our, our dual-language program here at the International School, uh, starting in pre-K, K, and one for, uh, 21, 22, with the idea that we're going to grow this to eighth grade. Um, on this website, we have created all this information in English and Spanish. But the goo- cool thing about the Google sites is that it also has built-in translation as well, uh, for, uh, families. Um, and what's unique about the program, and I'll just highlight a few things, uh, uh, that, 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 um, Adella may, may have, uh, skipped over is that, um, the cool thing about the, this program is that if you speak English, sometimes what, uh, parents get nervous about when you send your kid to a school, like a dual-language school, is like, how are they going to learn reading? Like, reading's hard enough, right, to learn in English? Well, the cool thing about the program is that, um, uh, the native languages, uh, you're, 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 uh, you, you teach reading in the native language. You start, uh, uh, the native language and English Language Arts reading in, in the early grades. Um, and that is so the student can develop it, but the 90% of the rest of the day will be in, um, the alternative language. And then so, uh, you will learn to teach reading. And as you, as you grow throughout the school and as you get around third grade, uh, you start experiencing everything 50/50. 50% of the school is in English, 50% in Spanish. And that there is no one language that has, uh, uh, more weight in the school. Um, there is equal weighting to English and Spanish in the school. And so signage, uh, when you give assemblies, when you do morning announcements, all, think of all those things that happen in your typical school. It's going to be so different here. Um, and we're really excited about like all of these opportunities of what does this mean for parents, right? And so what does it mean for parents coming to a school like this? And how, um, and, and, and a lot of the webinars, we had questions of, hey, or comments, hey, I want to learn another language with my kid so I can talk to them about the environmental print and talk to them. And so so many possibilities here to be able to provide parents with some additional language opportunities to be able to, to, to support their child and, and their growth. But also to make connections to other families and community who may be speaking, language could be barrier currently from them, um, getting together. And then, uh, moving forward, uh, we can really see this program being a model for the district, not just, just for the school. And so, um, you can see here, we work pretty hard at getting these, uh, these, these, these beautiful banners up and, and, and multiple languages on our website. Uh, in, uh, in English, Spanish, Portuguese, and Albanian. Um, and, uh, I, I want to, I want to highlight this one video for you. Uh, I believe this video, um, um, is something to aspire to. And I could really see this when you, when you look at these classes, um, I could see this being a Waterbury Public School in the very near future.
Amigos is a two-way immersion school for students from JK through eighth grade. The mission and vision of our school is to graduate young people who are fully bilingual, biliterate, and multicultural.
Authentic bilinguality means that you navigate the language as a literate human being, not that you know how to go to a train station or a restaurant and order food. It means that students feel confident reading, writing, communicating, expressing themselves in both languages. Both languages have equal footing and equal power. Both languages have equal footing and equal power. So you're not learning Spanish as a foreign language, you're learning Spanish as a language of instruction, as you learn English as a language of instruction.
So we're studying about plants?
We have a model that is eighty percent Spanish in the early grades. With twenty percent of instructional time in English. And as they go throughout the years, that model shifts to fifty percent instructional time in Spanish and fifty percent in English.
Amigos is a really good place, cuz everyone is speaking Spanish around you, so that makes you motivated to speak Spanish.
There's a lot of research around two-way immersion and the benefits of speaking multiple languages. In my mind, the benefits are cognitive, social and economic.
There's all kinds of different benefits that have been researched about the vocabulary that you build in two languages as opposed to just one. How flexible and malleable your brain is. To me, it's more about humanity and how we are able to step in somebody else's shoes and see the world how they see it.
I like learning two languages because if I go somewhere that has another language, they might sort of understand you a little bit.
They know from the beginning that we have different kind of people, that they speak different languages. So it's not only you, your country, your language.
I learned Spanish as a teenager, so I wasn't a young child and it wasn't part of my family. And I always tell people, the world opened up to me, and not even in a way of like, I could get so many jobs, but just I know more about the world and I'm able to talk to more people and go more places and understand things that would be impossible if I didn't speak Spanish.
For most of our teachers, being bilingual has impacted their personal life in a significant way. And they really bring that with them here and help inspire the young people.
Over the years, I've gone through doubts of like, oh, well, I don't know that much Spanish, so maybe I'm not exactly bilingual, but now as I've gotten older, I've embraced my culture and who I am, I'm like, oh, I'm bilingual because I speak Spanish and I speak English and I am open to any culture.
To hear the students recognize the benefits tells me that we're doing the right thing. We want them to feel that they can leave Amigos and go out into the world and meet new people and visit new places and have a world perspective about life, which I think is really crucial in this day and age for our young people.
So I just wanna leave that up, um, because that, that will pop off the screen fairly quickly and um, you know, Dr. Ruffin, I can't help but uh, think too about um, our tribute to Mr. Henry earlier, uh, in the, uh, in the board meeting and how he connected with so many of us and, and especially some of us on the, on the, on the call in two languages, and so I was one of his calling cards, right, and so uh, um, you know, and, and so you just think about uh, our students and our ability to be able to um, to teach them in two languages, and, and Adella pointed this out to me earlier when we gave the webinar, she goes, I really like how you say you're, you're giving your child the gift of two languages, and so, you know, I really think that. Um, um, and so it's, it's a really exciting opportunity. Um, but in doing this, uh, we have, we have created somewhat of another issue for you, the board, here because um, uh, we have not named the exact location of the school um, just yet, and we uh, um, and I know that will be coming in the future, and I know we have not named the, uh, leader of, of the school yet, but I, I could tell you with the very little publicity we've been able to do, we, we've gone on blah, 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 uh, thank you, Adella, for getting on there, giving some radio shout-out. Uh, for that, we've reached out to Representative Reyes who spread this word, we've, we've done it through Parents Square and um, I've never seen a turnout like this, but I, I don't know if you can see my screen, I think I've taken it off, but um, as of, as of this moment, we've had eight hundred and eight uh, applications uh, uh, for the school for pre-K, K and one opening for the twenty-one, twenty-two. And uh, that would pretty much, you know, eight hundred and eight openings would, would cover almost the entire kindergarten class for Waterbury. So um, it's really exciting and, and we expect more now. Um, we realize that some of the parents that are, are, are putting in the application are hoping we just somehow find a way to make this like, starting in third grade or second grade. Uh, even though it is opening, but just pre-K, K and one at this moment. Um, we have, uh, we have, uh, many of those applications, and unfortunately, at this point, we're gonna have, we have a good problem on our hands, uh, to try to figure out, uh, how to best do this, and um, one thing I do know in talking to Dr. Ruffin is, 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 is part of the design for this program is to also ensure that there's some neighborhood and community aspect of it, and so whatever community this will be in. Uh, as we, as we get closer to, how do you select, um, having neighborhood priority is going to be important as well. And that will be laid out um, through that process. And sent to the board as well, so um, you know, I just wanted to provide you with that extra information, I think eight hundred eight uh, applications as far is just an amazing amount. Um, uh, it's something to be proud of, and, you know, we really look forward to opening the doors for this, this, this new school and in a few short months.
Okay, um, and Adella. Dr. Ruffin, did you wanna, did you wanna open this up, uh, see if there are any questions? Uh, first, many Commissioners, any questions? Comments? Okay, I'm missing you, okay. Serrano or Donal, Commissioner?
Serrano Adorno, thank you. Um, first, esto me hace muy feliz, I know Mr. Henry would always speak both languages, this makes me so excited, uh, as I mentioned, I think when we first talked about this, my son Jacob started maloney speaking Japanese. Uh, so konichiwa. And so when he was growing up, obviously, we spoke Spanish at home and English, so at one point, he was being trilingual. Um, which was a little confusing in the beginning, cuz he would say, mommy, I want orange juice. Um, or yo quiero orange juice, so he was speaking three languages in one sentence. Um, so there, there are certain Japanese that he still speaks, knows how to write his name in Kanji, but I think this is such, being a, a bilingual opens up a, a social and cultural opportunity for, for our students. Um, it, it lets you just interact with different people and just really, uh, understand the, the nuances of, of other cultures. But the doors of opportunities that it will open, um, them speaking, you know, in Spanish, obviously, when the you know, if, if Mayo Larry's still on, he'll know the, the population in our city, I'm pretty sure the majority are Hispanics, just as they are in, in our schools, but um, not all, I gotta be honest, not all my children speak uh, Spanish fairly fluently like I do, uh, Spanish was my first language, but I think this is such, I, I'm so excited, I wish they, they had this a lot uh, sooner. Um, but I, I'm excited, I can't wait to see this flourish, I'm so excited, Darren, that you mentioned how many people so far has, has applied, so I, I'm really looking forward to, to seeing this this growth and just seeing how the students interact, I can't wait to communicate with, with them. I, I'm just super excited, so thank you guys, gracias, señora Adel, you too, everyone for their hard work and and uh, keep up the great work, thank you, arigato, gracias.
Thank you. Okay.
Trilingual.
Any uh, any other comments? Questions, I don't see, okay, Commissioner Brown?
Yes, uh, very exciting, and thank you all for your hard work, I remember talking to Adel, remember? About five years ago about dual language programs, so this is far exceeding my expectations, but I just had a question about staffing. Do, do, uh, are, are we concerned about staffing, or do they need a special certification, or where, where do you think we are with the staffing?
We're always concerned about staffing, but I, you know, what I think, you know, in this case, you know, that if I could say anything about, uh, you know, Adella, she finds a way, you know, to, to get her program staffed, and maybe she, she finds every single little way the state allows, uh, DSEPs and getting peo- people in, so yeah, but, but it's a concern because there's a shortage across the state, but Adella, you may wanna speak to that, and um, I, I just wanna add one thing to what Commissioner Adorno uh, said earlier. You might be surprised to know that um, uh, so far, the, over eight hundred applicants, eighty-five percent are English native speakers.
Good, good.
So, um, you know, a lot of people might think, oh, this is, this is for a lot of students that are speaking native Spanish at home. I'm actually now like, a little worried, like, let's get some more native Spanish speakers signing up for this, and so I think a lot of parents that are English speaking at home are seeing the value here and signing up quickly, so we need to to reach out to our constituents and do that, so uh, apologize.
Absolutely, Darren, good job, um, that's, that's even more exciting, sorry, I didn't mean to jump there.
All right, go ahead. Commissioner, did you have any further questions?
I think Adella was gonna address the uh,
All right, Adella, would you address? That, it's uh,
Yes, with um, teacher credentials, we will want our teachers to be cross-certified. So our bilingual teachers, of course, will be certified to teach um, the content area, you know, elementary education, but then also be bilingual cross-endorsed. And then our regular, the English part, we would want them to also be cross-certified in TESOL. And we will support the teachers through that process. And in addition to that, there will be additional training because we want our teachers to be have a deep understanding of both languages. And in doing so, develop um, units using the um, Teaching for Biliteracy Framework. So that way, students are learning not only that both languages, but also how both languages um, connect.
Okay. All right, any other comments, questions? If not, we'll move on.
Commissioner hand up.
Oh, I see, yep, okay, um, who am I seeing, Ashley, go ahead.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, and I apologize because I might be getting a little ahead of myself. So uh, regarding applications, would this be solely for students that start off? Oh my goodness, what is happening, wait, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Go ahead, we can hear you.
Yeah, okay, so for applications, would it only be considered for students that start off in pre-K, or can you apply at any age? Like, let's say someone were to migrate from uh, another country, and then they came here, and then they wanted to apply to your international school, but they were like a fifth grader or something, would they still be allowed to apply to the international school?
For the twenty, for the twenty, good, good question, Ashley, twenty, for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, um, students in the pre-K, K and, and one grades would, would be able to apply. Um, and, and uh, moving forward, as those students move up to first grade and second grade and third grade, they'd be filling those grades up. And so you really kind of started at, um, you're, you're opening it up at pre-K. There may be times where students transfer out, and there may be candidates for students who could go in, but to be able to stay true to the program, um, this is a really tough school to try to get in and jump in at sixth grade. Because you've built this whole community around teaching two languages, and so it's almost not even fair if you throw a student in, in fifth grade and sixth grade, and so it's really important we get consistency for, for membership, so the students that are in first grade next year will become our second graders, and they'll grow up to be our third graders and fourth graders, so right now, that's the model.
Okay, thank you, and so also, would you be willing of considering to expand it to high school in the future? Like in the very far future?
Oh, I think, I think that's gonna, that's a very good, that's a very good uh, opportunity for us, I think I'm just, like I said, without, without even doing much uh, um, uh, communication and without very doing much marketing, we already have eight hundred uh, applicants from the city, so I think, I think that, I think we're creating a nice, nice problem to solve here, so yes, Ashley, I think that's a, there's gonna be a good opportunity there in the future.
Okay, that's, just one more question, I'm sorry.
One more question, Ashley, go ahead, I see Commissioner Hernandez, you next.
Okay, so uh, considering the fact that you wanted to create this so that more students, uh, you know, there's more diversity. Uh, what about history classes? Because I do see that usually uh, history classes are taught through the American colonization um, perspective, and I was wondering if you were considering uh, including history from other countries, especially Hispanic nations.
Absolutely, so I think uh, it's, it's a good point, uh, Ashley, one of the things that uh, that Adella can attest to is that we meet as, I meet with the content supervisors every Tuesday and Thursday, and for the last month and a half to two months, uh, this has been a standing agenda item to make sure that the curriculum here can uh, can, can be representative of what we truly want this school to be, but like, like I said earlier, it could also uh, end up being the model for how the rest of the district operates, and so great question, absolutely, and um, in, in those, in, in those curriculum changes will also impact the entire school system.
All right, Ashley, you're good, okay, Commissioner Hernandez?
Darren, I know you said we had eight hundred applicants, right, so far, with little or nothing. What I'm getting um, from some people are they're, they don't wanna do it because they just naturally assume that all the kids that speak Spanish are gonna be um, given the opportunity to go into the school. And it's not going to leave any, you know, where, where are those other kids coming, so what percentage of people that, of the eight hundred, if you can, um, are already Spanish-speaking students?
So Commissioner Hernandez, I would say that person did not come to one of the six webinars he held. Uh, or, or looked at that recorded webinar that we posted, because,
I did.
Okay, so I will say, I would say, so, so, go ahead, Commissioner.
This question got, as soon as I sent it, like, oh, we're gonna open it, oh, well, you know what, it's only gonna be for Spanish-speaking kids. So we need to advertise that a little bit better to let them understand that this is, this is not a uh, uh, school for just Spanish-speaking kids, it's a school for all our kids that whose parents are interested in allowing their kids to have a good language. So I, I just feel like, even though I didn't go to the seminar, and a lot of parents probably didn't go to the seminar, it's, it's something that we should uh, advertise so that they would know, because eight hundred could turn into sixteen hundred.
Uh, I think very easily, and, and somebody must be watching because we're up from eight oh, eight oh seven to eight eleven right now.
Darren, if I could, uh, from the uh, curriculum committee, um, we want everyone to be involved, so.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner, everything through the chair, please, go ahead, Darren.
Um, so I, I, it's a good, yeah, a, a good point, Commissioner Hernandez, when we go to and, and, and be a little bit more aggressive in the marketing. Um, I think helping name the leader and, and maybe the location will be part of that solution, but you know, if, if, someone's getting the word out, because eighty-five percent of the, the, the students, the, the, the parents that have signed up their students uh, are eighty-five percent are English-speaking, and so, and so and, 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 and it, and it could be my own fault, because in the webinars, I pleaded with people, the first year is always the easiest to get in. Because after that, it gets harder and harder, cuz more people apply. Um, which is true in, in all of our programming, I mean, look at what happened at early college high, we had a, we had a double the size this year, so I think, um, you know, I, I, I do think that, that there is some misunderstanding there, I do think that sometimes people get confused between um, dual language school and international school and a cultural school that really uh, dedicates the, the focus on learning two languages versus a bilingual program. And that's really just made for the Spanish-speaking kids, we gotta, we gotta wipe that out of people's brain, that is not what this is, this is for, for parents that wanna give the gift of two languages to their students by the time they graduate, so we will, we will do our best to communicate that.
Also, I want, I'd like to add, Commissioner, um, that uh, we anticipated that we would open this uh, this school, this program with a pre-K, two classes in pre-K, two classes in K, and two classes in first grade. We anticipated that we were gonna have approximately one hundred and twelve students in year one, that's all, you know, we, we've gotta go back to the drawing board, but that's what we were preparing for. Uh, we also said that we wanted fifty percent of the class to be English speakers. And we wanted fifty percent to be non-English speakers, we didn't say that they needed to speak Spanish. Or we didn't say that they, you know, they should be a combination of all other languages that are not English, so it can be Albanian or Portuguese or Chinese, or any, it could be anything. So, and, and they're going to be fifty-fifty, fifty only English speakers, fifty non-English speakers, and they're together going to learn English and Spanish. So if they're another language besides Spanish, or you know, they're going to be trilingual by the time that they leave, because we're gonna focus on making them proficient in English and Spanish, and whatever other language they speak, that's going to be an open door for those students attending. Uh, and so we are deliberately looking for only English speakers and only non-English speakers, regardless of what language they speak. Uh, and so we are deliberately looking for only English speakers and only non-English speakers, regardless of what language they speak.
Thank you. And I think that, that's what needs to be publicized to the fullest. So that people aren't just thinking, oh, well, it's, it's a bilingual. Because it's not a bilingual. It's a, it's a dual language. And, and it just needs to be, um, put out there better.
Uh, I think we have the formula for after tonight, we should be poised to do exactly that.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. Uh, I think Ms. Ally, did you have a comment?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, um, in terms of success, how are, like, what are the standards? Or what is being put in place to measure, um, the progress these students are making in certain topics? Like, um, reading or English, like, are they the same standards and tests that students in the regular Waterbury Public Schools are taking? And then are we going to compare their performance and make changes to our public schools based on that?
The team, uh, what an amazing question. Uh, honestly, that was, that was great. Um, so we, we were asked that question by a parent as well in one of our webinars. And so the standards are the standards. And so the standards aren't gonna bend. They're not gonna, we're not gonna lower the standards for students. The standards are going to be expected for students as they go through in, uh, English Language Arts, uh, and Mathematics, Science, Social Studies, uh, as, as well as our, uh, our, our arts. Um, one of the things that, uh, we're going to measure our success by is not just how well students do on those standards. But, um, there's a few things that as students go through and you get into the upper grades, uh, we will be testing them for, uh, uh, the SEAL of Bilinguality by the time they leave the school. And so that is something new in Waterbury Public Schools that we're really administering for mostly high school students. Um, but, uh, and for the students in this school, we'll be administering it much earlier, um, and by the time they leave. Or by the time they're ready. Uh, doesn't have to be by the time they leave. They could be ready. Uh, and, and the board has passed a policy that allows us to earn, uh, for students to earn high school credit starting in sixth grade, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And so, um, if, if we're also giving certain language, uh, skills and providing, uh, certain classes, students couldn't, we would, we would want to be one. Measure our success by how many students are earning high school credit, uh, in the middle school, in this school. And how many students are earning that SEAL of Bilinguality, which our expectation would be a hundred percent, uh, if, if the model stands correctly. So those are some of the unique aspects, uh, that we'd be looking at.
Um, and then one more question. Um, is there a way to measure cultural awareness? Because, um, I did some research and I know some, like, students that grow up on, in bilingual or multilingual households, um, tend to be less biased, less racially biased. So is there a way we can measure that and try to implement it in our schools?
Uh, there's a certain, there's, there's certain, uh, mechanisms that can certainly measure our schools in terms of how they're, uh, creating welcoming atmospheres. Uh, there's something called the welcoming walkthrough that, uh, some of our schools have implemented. Uh, but I, I, uh, so in, in terms of the structure and, and the way the school presents itself, uh, that is certainly something that we'd wanna take a look at and measure ourselves. In terms of biases, there are, uh, standard biases tests. Uh, I think some of us have, have used those in some of our equity, uh, training. Um, and, and so, uh, what that could look like maybe for students, uh, we'd have to flesh that out exactly of how we, how we would measure that, uh, not just in students, but also staff. Uh, and so that's something that, that we would have to think through, uh, Fatima, about if, if we, if we do it here, uh, in this school, we'd obviously wanna measure all students, uh, that aren't, uh, in this school and, and see if there's a difference in, in the, in the two. And so that could be maybe through a bias test or it could be through a student survey. And I know you've received a few of those this year, so, um, and so, and so it's something for us to think about as we, as, as the program grows into some of the older grades. Absolutely.
Very important and, and we should stay focused on that. It's very important to us, Fatima.
Okay, Ruffin, would you move on to, um, if there's no other, I'm just, uh, could you move on to Bee, please? The update, reimagining education?
Yes, we are, um, we are prepared to begin, uh, a very brief. But, you know, we've, it, it, the, the presentation itself is not brief. We're gonna be brief tonight. Uh, but the work that everyone is doing towards re. The think tank. And again, I'll ask the, um, the team, because several of them are chair. That are aligned with the strategic plan of the board and they're aligned with the, um, the, um, the tenants of the, uh, S R two funds, uh, and they're, they're moving in a direction that, that, uh, will cause us to really, um, uh, have our work, not short-term, long-term. And so I'd like for the, the committee chairs to, to interject right now to give the board, uh, summary of where we are so far.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Uh, I'll start. Good evening, everyone. Um, again, my name's Matt Brown. And, uh, I've been working, um, with, uh, both organizing the, the committees and part of the Teaching and Learning Committee. And just wanna talk a little bit about process, um, of where we are. And then, uh, have Darren, who's also, um, helping organize this, uh, introduce the other co-chairs and share what they'd like. But we are, um, well into this process, as Dr. Ruffin said, of trying to use both the, uh, the S R two funds, but also the sort of, uh, re-emerging of the strategic plan as a way to both reimagine and recommit to some of the powerful things that Waterbury Public Schools both have been doing and are, um, hoping to do as we come out of this school year into next. Um, just to give a couple of process points, we've had, uh, several informational meetings where we had, um, many people from the community, students and parents attend and, and hear about the work that we're trying to do and the opportunity that the almost forty million dollars of S R two funds provides the, the district. Um, and then had, uh, many people, uh, dozens of people sign up to be on committees. And we put out surveys, um, for those who weren't able to, to try to really make sure we were getting, um, good answers to these questions of what was working, uh, during the pandemic, what was working before the pandemic that you wanna see continue? What was not working? Um, and what were some things that were revealed that we really need to reimagine? Even as we try to hold on to those things when we come out the other side of the pandemic. Um, we had, uh, over, we had the surveys we gave out to both students, uh, teachers as well as families. Um, many, many responses. It was not just a click the box qual, quantitative survey. They were long questions that really asked folks to think deeply about what they should share with us as we tried to design Waterbury Schools for the next stage here. We had over, um, six thousand different discrete data points that came out of that, basically, of answers when you looked at it. And, and as you can imagine, some of those answers, uh, helped us recommit to things of some students saying, I can't wait to get back to school. I can't wait to have connections with my teachers and my peers and I want you to facilitate that. And then we also had answers that Nike's reimagine, students who said, you know what? Virtual learning is really working for me. And how are you gonna help me continue that when we come out the other side of this thing? And so we spent quite a bit of time in these, uh, in these committees, trying to take that information with the other information we have from the district and think about what these funds can do to help us recommit to those areas in the strategic plan that we know we need to continue to be strong with. Um, and then also to reimagine and re-envision some things that we can do differently, both with the help of the S R two funds and the collective energy of our communities as we come out the other side of the pandemic. But we had groups that were meeting and doing this design. Um, they have completed those meetings and have given us a good draft of ideas of what to do going forward. And I'm gonna hand it off now to Darren, who could talk a little bit about what those groups were and how they relate to the strategic plan and some of the initial insights as to what those products might be as we get to the last two weeks of putting together this proposal.
Yeah, thanks. Take it, Matt.
Before Darren starts and just, uh, to, to, if you'll allow me just one quick second, um, to be able, because I, I was asked a question in terms of the international school, and I know we have a special board meeting coming up. But it is going to be my recommendation and my discussion with the board that we have the International School at the Beecher Avenue property. And that it becomes the International School with a focus on dual language. That is what I'm going to recommend to the board. And this is what I will ask you to, um, to vote on.
Okay. Uh, actually, good segue, Dr. Ruffin, as part of our reimagine. So, you know, even, uh, so as Matt's alluded to earlier, we're working to, uh, organize. We've, uh, we've met, uh, three times already as, as subcommittees and groups. And so we've broken down, uh, if you recall, the strategic plan had a, had a, had a few areas that we looked into, which is, uh, uh, post, post-secondary, um, uh, college and career readiness. Uh, and we had strategies that, uh, a robust number of strategies under that column. Uh, we also were focusing, uh, uh, improving the teaching and learning aspect of the, of the, of the, of the, of the system. Uh, we, uh, we, in addition to that, the human capital and talent, uh, development of the system, uh, the family and community engagement and, uh, fiscal responsibility were the five pillars, uh, of our strategic plan. Um, and, and, and conversation with, uh, Dr. Ruffin and, and a, a few of our committee members. You know, we decided to, to break apart, uh, and add another, uh, portion of the strategic plan into SEL, uh, social emotional learning, which, you know, we were, it was, it was, it just kept popping up in everybody's plan. And we said, you know, we have to, Dr. Ruffin, we had a good conversations, you know, we have to, we have to name it and we have to separate it and we have to focus in on it. And so, uh, we've broken out and, and, and to a section where, um, uh, uh, Jackie Davis and, and a few others are, are, are leading that section as well for us. And so, um, you know, each section of the plan, we've, we've met, uh, we've had a tremendous amount of, uh, support. Uh, I think Matt had, we had about twelve, thirteen subcommittee members in our group alone, uh, you know, coming for all three times. And, and, uh, after school and after work. And, and so great, great success there and, and engaging people in, in this work. And so, you know, what is gonna come out on the other side is, 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 is we're gonna take our old strategic plan and with all the new funding and all the new re-imagining and, and put it together for a robust plan, that's gonna take us probably, uh, uh, a lot longer than twenty twenty-seven. Dr. Ruffin and I were talking earlier to this. It's probably gonna take us to twenty thirty with all the things that we have in there. But, you know, it's, it's, it's an ambitious and, 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 uh, great plan. And so with that being said, you know, I'll, uh, we have some co, uh, subcommittee chairs that are on this call. And so, uh, if any of the subcommittee chairs wanna chime in about, uh, if you, if you chair the, the post-secondary, the SEL, uh, the family, community engagement, um, if you, uh, human capital or teaching and learning piece, uh, please don't chime in. Uh, and then I could cover, uh, family, community engagement afterwards because, uh, Sujatha is not here with us tonight.
Good evening, everyone. And I know the greeting protocol has been established, so I'm just gonna go right in. I'm Gianna Sepperson and I work with the, um, secondary schools as the Assistant Superintendent. And myself and Mike Marotti are the co-chairs for the postgraduate guidance and preparation team. And we worked hard to create a plan to prepare all students for postgraduate success. Our team is comprised of representatives from secondary staff and elementary staff as well as central office. And we do wanna say thanks to Commissioner Brown for jumping in in our subcommittee, uh, breakout room yesterday. And as a group, um, leveraging the Waterbury Public Schools' portrait of a graduate, um, in the core values that we worked on earlier last year, uh, during our strategic plan meetings. We conducted a needs assessment to inform the, uh, current status of the strategic planning area. And based on the data that the group, uh, had, we identified two plans or two goals. And one is the student success plans and the career pathways. And this is not anything new. This is exactly what we worked on, um, while we were going through the strategic plan progress with the Center for School Change. Um, so that's where we are. Um, we have worked very diligently to, um, make sure that these areas advance equity in our school district and provide, um, shared experiences to prepare students for college and career readiness and earn credits for college while in high school.
So for strategic area three, social and emotional, um, I co-chaired this with Nairi Tuset. And we began with our needs assessment. So we looked at surveys from, um, the community that Data Haven had put together. We looked at the surveys that Matt just alluded to. We looked at some of our chronic absenteeism data, our two-one-one referral data. And one of the things that, um, came out was the importance of a sense of belonging and a sense of connectedness among our students. And so one of the things that, one of the strategies that we wanna focus on is building that comprehensive structure of social emotional learning that is inclusive of our whole Waterbury Public Schools community. Um, and so I said, say inclusive because we also want to focus on building the social emotional wellness of our staff. We've all heard the term that hurt people, hurt people, but the opposite is also true, that healed people, heal people. And so we want our staff to be able to meet the needs of our students, um, as they return to us. And so we have the opportunity to invest in a tier-one SEL program that would look at providing for the interpersonal and personal skills of all of our students to help mitigate some of the effects of the pandemic and to also help optimize learning. And so, um, one of the opportunities that we have in front of us right now is the addition of the counselors in the building that increases opportunities for lessons on, um, social emotional competencies. And also Matt Brown is working with some of our schools in terms of using Panorama, um, which is a survey tool to track how well we're doing as a system to, um, in terms of building the social emotional competencies of our students. And so he's beginning that with the middle schools. We have the opportunity to possibly look at, um, doing that district-wide so that we could progress monitor how we're doing in terms of implementing this. The other piece that we identified as a huge strength there in Waterbury is the fact that we have a number of community agencies that have the same goal as us and that's to build the, build, um, on our students' strengths and to develop their potential. And so we want to be able to capitalize on those relationships with our community partners. And so some of the strategies that we've identified, um, in, in our strategic area overlap with the family and community engagement, um, team. So we've actually been working collaboratively with Sujatha and that team and developing some of those strategies.
Okay, is there any, uh, any other committee chairs that we should say something?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Okay.
Norrie Buckley, Assistant Superintendent, co-chair for the Human Capital Strategic Area along with Juan Menduza. So our committee met and we had eleven members on our committee comprised of teachers, elementary and secondary principals and bilingual school administrator. We reviewed our strategic plan and recommitted investing in our staff in three areas of the human capital theory, acquire, develop and sustain our staff. During our sessions, we identified areas of strengths and weaknesses. And our findings indicated that our current work is currently moving in the correct direction. Our next steps are to continue, continue to have strong focus on recruiting and retaining, uh, um, excuse me, hiring diverse, high-quality teachers and leaders to the Waterbury Public Schools highest need content areas and highest need schools and explore creating flexibilities for hiring hard-to-fill areas. We will continue to provide autonomy and continuous high-quality professional learning opportunities to educators to embed continual self-reflection regarding how their social locations shape their educational practices, what they need to know about culture, power and the difference, and how they can more critically and conscientiously, conscious when making decisions. Provide additional professional learning strategies to assist with the shift in instruction and technology. Work collaboratively with Special Education Department to explore ways in retaining, supporting and incentivizing teachers to use cross-endorsed special education certification. And we'll continue to explore and develop career pathways in order to retain high-quality staff at all levels.
Thank you, uh, uh, Ms. Buckley. And, uh, just, even though I wasn't part of family, community engagement, uh, they, they talked a lot about the success of Parent Square and, uh, building upon that, uh, and, and going, but be going on, going beyond just simple communications to families. So having, uh, not just having a more robust social media, uh, opportunity for, uh, our parents to engage with us. But also, how do we truly get around just beyond, okay, now we've communicated, truly engaging, uh, parents at community roundtables, partners with community roundtables and information sessions, um, and going into the neighborhoods instead of always, um, constantly kind of being at the schools, um, really getting into the, the heart of the community. Um, and another overarching theme that's coming out of that, um, that group is weaving together communication and family, community, age, your family and community engagement departments, so that we're not working in silos, but as one entity with community partners and faith-based organizations. And so, uh, they're really working on strategies in that, in that area as well.
Okay. Thank you, Darren. I, Commissioner Stengel, I'm sorry, Dr. Ruffin, hold on. Commissioner Stengel, you have a question? You muted.
Thank you. No, I did not have a question. I was just moving.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, uh, Dr. Ruffin.
I just wanted to share that additional feedback is going to be ongoing. I, I have meetings scheduled for, uh, after the Easter holiday to meet with students at the elementary grade level, the middle school level and the high school level, so that they could have some input and discussion and dialogue around reimagining education. And then, uh, you know, we'll come back with, uh, plans, uh, And then, uh, you know, we'll come back with, uh, plans, uh, uh, and feedback from other community stakeholders. We are going to hold some forums. And, uh, then we'll come back to the board. And so this is going to be a very collaborative process because we want to make certain. That we are very, very clear that we have to see an impact and we have to see a return on our investment for the funding that we are planning for.
Okay. All right. Can everyone mute themselves if you're not speaking, please? All right, Dr. Ruffin, are you all set?
No, Ms. Biello has, uh, uh, her part.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Dr. Ruffin.
Go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Vice President Harvey.
Sure.
Um, as you know, we're receiving over forty-one million dollars for the S R two funding. Um, this will, uh, take us through September of twenty twenty. Three, um, so once the application is submitted. Um, we should have a quick turnaround of the funds, uh, according to a webinar we were on today. Um, and not only would be receiving these funds, but there's additional funding, as you know, coming through the American Rescue Plan, uh, also known as S R three. Um, but as you know, there's, uh, the priorities that, um. Everyone has already referred, referred to the other, uh, chairman, uh, on academic supports, learning loss. Uh, learning acceleration, recovery, there's family and community connections, school safety, social emotional well-being. And remote learning, staff development and digital device. There is a fifth category now, um, that is called other eligible costs. Um, I think the state has realized, um, through other districts, um, having. Questioning, you know, can we do certain things with this, with these funds? Um, I think have realized, um, what the districts are facing. So there's this other category of cost, which could be used towards capital projects. Um. It could also be used to help offset, um, a deficit in our food service program. As you know, during COVID, they've lost revenue. Um, but they have still been providing, uh. Meals to our students and families, um, so they have allowed that to be a cost. Um, so our goal and on the financial responsibility and stability piece of this. Um, is to make sure that in the short term, we can meet the goals, um, needed, um. For our students, but also for the long-term goals. And are we going to be able to sustain, um, you know, what is put in here? And so those are the decisions that, um. The financial, uh, stability, uh, sustainability team will be looking at. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Dr. Ruffin.
Okay, team, are you all done? Uh, the final portion, and I'll be very quick, is to share with you that the strategic plan that we've been working on. Um, that, you know, that, that, I, I don't believe there was an official board vote, but I see the strategic plan in, in, uh, light of everything that has happened. During, uh, the twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one school year, getting expanded as a result of everything that we have learned and everything that we need to do. So I would like to come back to the board at a much later date with that strategic plan that's probably going to take us through another decade. And, uh, and if you're okay with that, that's what it, really what I wanted to share with you, that as we are making this even more robust with lessons learned. Uh, we have accomplished some of the things in our strategic plan. Uh, we need to acknowledge that, but we also need to acknowledge that now we have an opportunity with the, um, additional funding. To, to not only make it more robust, but to be able to take it through so that we can see these projects being completed over time, which could and will include the operational. Um, uh, uh, operational features. And that's all I wanted to say about that particular portion of the strategic plan at this time.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Any questions, comments before we move on? Okay, Commissioner Brown.
Just quickly, uh, are you at a, uh. At this point, can you talk about what's, what you're visioning for summer school or after-school programs, or is that still part of the planning process?
Now, the, the team is still working on it and, and we're working on something that is going to be totally non-traditional. Uh, uh, we're working on accelerating. We are working on not waiting until the summer. Uh, you know, because we already have schools that have, have been doing, uh, and, and, uh, doing creative things that are going to impact students. Be- because we already have some data that we shouldn't wait until the summer to do something.
Okay.
Uh, uh, summer learning is going to be quite different for us and we have an opportunity, uh, as, you know, the, the mayor, uh, uh, and, and I spoke. Uh, multiple times along with others, uh, along with, uh, when, uh, Senator Chris Murphy came to, um, to Waterbury this week. Uh, there's going to be opportunities for summer programming that's going to affect all of our children. Uh, you know, the, from the ones that will be offered summer work jobs. I don't know, Mayor, if you want to talk about that. But we also have students that are going to be attending perhaps some learning in terms of content area, but we know that children need much more than that. Especially as we have been through almost a year of seclusion, we need to make this robust and offer an opportunities for enrichment, for the arts, for performance. For creativity, uh, and exposure to some of the things that students have not been exposed to for the last year, especially when it comes to enrichment opportunities. So. Lots, lots of stuff that's being worked on, as well as projects we will be worked on with the chief. Uh, Chief Magnolo and, and projects and programs that he is working on in collaboration with the school district. To really help some of my, our, our most vulnerable children, especially those that are perhaps, uh, very susceptible to having, um, a lot of suspensions. Or then maybe even something that could lead to arrest to mitigate that. So there's a lot going on with the acceleration program. That's going to go far beyond what we've ever done.
Wow, thank you so much. And I know when I saw that in the paper today, I was like, wow, that's going to be amazing, the work, uh, hiring all these kids, so. It's awesome.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Mayor, did you have something to say? Ashley, I see you. I know you had a question. Mayor, did you have something to say?
Thank you, uh, Vice President Harvey. Um, I just want to, um, echo others. Um, I am in complete and total support of the. Um, the school, um, that is, uh, being proposed here and, and the site as well on Beecher. I think it's a great location for it. And I'm also, uh, I'm, I apologize, I have to jump off to another commitment, but I, um, I sent all commissioners a, uh. A chat text as well. Um, but I, uh, am grateful through your leadership on this, uh, Dr. Ruffin and. And the, it, just touching quickly upon the summer youth employment programs. We're going to try to do things that have never done, been done before. There is an awful lot of funding that is coming down. Uh, to address the students who've been left behind or, or caught up with the COVID, uh, disengagement. And so our, our goal is to. Get as many, uh, students involved, um, hiring students sixteen and over. And then also getting the younger ones involved in all kinds of different camps and programs, enlightenment programs, enrichment programs. Uh, really wild and crazy stuff because we've never had this type of opportunity before, but we're going to take full advantage of it. But we're going to keep this board fully informed and, and we would love any suggestions and ideas, uh, as well along the way. So I thank you all. Uh, for your continued efforts and I'm going to sign off, but I'm, I'm grateful for all your service. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Have a good evening. Ashley, did you have a, a question or a comment?
Yes, I did have a question. So my question was regarding, uh, the label of high-quality teachers. And I believe that although it is very important to diversify your, um. Teachers and, you know, so that people have someone to look up to or have a better connection with. But I also think it's important to diversify teaching methods, especially if coming from. Me as an immigrant and having a younger daughter. I'm not a younger daughter. Oh, my God, no, I have no children. My younger sister, uh, being neurodivergent, I've seen a huge difference in her impact in education and the teaching methods, which is usually just standard, like book. Reading and then just that stuff. Um, I've noticed that she has quite a huge difficulty in understanding material. And that's mainly because we do not have a diverse. Teaching method for students. And I think that that's also very important because. If we were to expand onto different ways of, uh, teaching, it would also boost our students' education and how they're learning and just. Overall, how we are as a city in general. And I don't know, I just think that was really important for me because I feel like I wish my sister would receive, um. Better access to education in that, especially because for her, sometimes she would get taken out of classes, uh, in order to. Go and learn in a separate area, but I think that there wouldn't be that much of a need for that to happen and she could still be included into the regular classroom if we were to include. More diverse teaching methods and taking all of these different mindsets into account. Instead of being more exclusive in that sense. So yes, when we say high-quality teachers, I just think that it's also important. That these high-quality teachers also are aware of different teaching methods. And incorporate those in the classroom. And I also think that student feedback is extremely important because. Well, obviously I was thinking like, maybe we should have student ratings for Waterbury Public Schools in which the students can rate their teachers and, you know. Kind of in a sense where teachers cannot get away with doing the bare minimum or not suiting, uh, all students' needs. Or I don't know, like if they definitely did a bad job in one area so that they can. I don't know how to say it, maybe like. Go through some training to fix these mistakes or. Find another job in some way. I'm not trying to criticize teachers here, but I'm just saying, I think that some teachers are more worthy of teaching than others. And there is definitely more that needs to get done.
Uh, uh, thank you, Ashley. Thank you. Okay. Um. Dr. Ruffin, did you have any comments there or?
Nope, I think Ashley hit it on the head.
Right. Any other comments, questions? Okay, Ms. Ali, then we're going to move on. Go ahead, Ms. Ali.
Yeah, so my concerns are kind of similar to Ash- Ashley's. Um, so she talked about having different teaching methods and I think like with COVID and. How we are teaching online, um, I noticed that all of my teachers have their own method of teaching and they were like kind of testing it out this year and they shifted from. Their usual teaching methods. So they had the chance to test out this new method that they thought would be better for students. So I think, um, like as a board, we should talk to those teachers about what methods they implemented. Um, their feedback on it, what was the most effective, and then we could use that to have more diverse methods. Um. And also I wanted to ask, how are we opening up the str- strategic plan? Um, to input from families, like parents and students, like how are we going to get direct input from students and. Just direct cooperation in forming the plan.
Okay. Commissioner, Dr. Ruffin, did you want to respond to that?
Absolutely. Um, you'll be giving an invitation, um. Ashley and Fatima and all, all of the students, elementary will have their time, middle school will have their time, high school will have their time. Uh, and you'll have an opportunity to provide, uh, as much in, uh, feedback and, and, uh, assistance in helping us redesign and reimagine the future. Uh, additionally, lots of feedback was provided much earlier when the, the board was working on the strategic plan. I held a number of community forums. And, uh, I will continue to do that. And I think every time that you see something either on a website or Parent Square that involves anything that involves Waterbury Public Schools. The student voice is critically important to me and my team and I are very much committed to hearing the student voice and everything. We had over six hundred student responses to a survey that was sent out by Chief Turnaround Officer and, um, and we're going to continue to do that. And certainly hope that we get more than six hundred students to have the input there. We also reached out to our families. We had, uh, a little less participation from families, about four hundred and some. And then we also did some, uh, uh, survey with our, our staff. And we're going to continue to do that. We're going to use it, uh, for feedback so that people can learn and, and grow and, and, you know, get another perspective. You know, we're not trying to be critical. We're certainly not, not trying to be critical of someone. Sometimes maybe people just don't know what others are thinking or how, what that student experience is like. So I think this opens up the door to have that conversation about this is how the students really feel. And, and this is how I thought the students felt. And then you'll have an opportunity as an entire district to grow. I don't, I don't believe that we get very far when we just offer the critic. I, I think it's when we offer the opportunity to, to, to see how others are feeling. Uh, others are learning and others are making use of that knowledge that we can learn together. And, uh, and I think you're going to see much more of that moving forward.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Uh, and with that, I'm going to move on. Um, to. I'm just looking to see if anyone had something to say. Okay, let us move on to item number three. Uh, Committee on Finance, uh, request approval to participate. Um, in the Healthy Food Certification Program. And then I think, yes, item number four, uh, which is request approval. Oh, um, of the food and beverage, uh, exemption statement for the Healthy Food Certification.
Good evening. It's nice to see everyone.
Hello.
Hi. I'm requesting approval to participate in the annual Healthy Food Certification Program for the school year two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, as you said, items three and four on the agenda. And it is two separate approvals. The first approval will certify that all of the food offered for sale to students. Separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores. Vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs and any fundraising activities on school premises. Sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups will comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period July first, two thousand twenty-one. Through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Comments? Let me just kind of scan here. I don't think I see anyone raising their hands. Okay. All right. I think we're good. We'll move on. Thank you very much.
So it's two-part. I just have the second.
Oh, that's what I said, three of four. Okay.
Okay, super. Thank you. The Board of Education or governing authority will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut Nutrition Standards, provided. That the following conditions are met. Number one, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. And two, the sale is at the location of the event. Three, the food items are not sold from a vending machine or school store.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions, comments? I don't see any hands. Oh, no, yes. Commissioner Hernandez, did you have something? Okay. Okay, I think we're okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right. So we will move on to item, uh, five, uh, Committee on Finance, request approval to apply for the, uh, let's see. Fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, school readiness continuation funding grant application. Darren.
Yes, thank you, Board. Uh, this is the application for our school readiness, uh, grant. Uh, for a total of, uh, ten million, fourteen thousand, five hundred ninety-six dollars. That would fund one thousand, three hundred twenty-eight preschool spaces in the city of Waterbury and would also allow us to spend seventy-five thousand, six hundred forty-one dollars. For quality enhancement funds, uh, focused on enhancing the quality, uh, at the programs. Uh, which, which is, comes in a variety of ways from professional learning, but also, uh, B C B A and behavioral support for those programs.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? All right, I'm scanning. I don't see anyone raising their hand. All right. If not, I will move on to, thank you, Darren. I move on to item six. Uh, Committee on Finance, request approval to apply for the Connecticut State Department of Education State-funded, uh, After-School Grant Program. Uh, this is Louise and, uh, Darren.
Uh, I think it's just Darren, uh, but I'll, I'll take it from, I'll take it from here. And so.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, uh, state-funded after-school grant, uh, programs are for the following schools, uh, Kingsbury, uh, Wilson, Duggan, Tinker. Hopeful, Washington, Wallace and North End Middle Schools. Um, these are not the only schools we have. Some schools are in, uh, different phases of their after-school funding programming. Uh, these are just up for renewal, um, as you can see from the letter. And, uh, we are asking for permission to apply. Uh, the deadline for grant submission is April nineteenth. Uh, the grant amount is, uh, between twenty-five thousand to two hundred thousand per year. Uh, uh, Louise Brown has been excellent at securing these for, for the city. Um, and, uh, we are asking for a board tonight. Um, and uh we are asking for Board tonight for um approval to apply for these.
All right, thank you, Darren. Are there any questions? Comments? Scanning. Commissioner Hernandez.
Darren, I don't see Walsh.
So Wa- so Walsh um isn't in this round of funding, but Walsh is, is already part of other after-school funding that, that we, that we already take advantage of. And so uh these schools uh are, are coming up and and would not have after-school uh programming um if they didn't uh apply for this year's uh upcoming grant.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Commissioner, any other questions? No? Yes? Okay. All right, we will move on to um item number seven, Committee on Finance, Request Approval to Apply for the Individual Individuals with Disabilities Act, IDEA uh uh twenty twenty-two grant, Darren and Elaine. I have on this.
Yes, thank you, uh Commissioner Harvey. Uh, uh, tonight we are requesting uh a- approval to apply for the IDEA grant for our special education and students with uh Individuals with Disabilities Act uh uh for five million six hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars. Uh, in your uh backup, you'll see that um where that money is, where those mises are going to, uh where uh about three point five million would be used for employee salaries. Um, and one point five would be for the benefits. Uh, beyond that also, uh, uh continuing to work with our um, our, our BCBAs for students in all grades. Um, and then the remaining funding for supplemental services and and the such.
All right. Thank you, Darren. Questions or comments? All right, I'm scanning now. All right, I don't see any hands, so we will. Thank you, Darren. We'll move on to item number eight. Uh, Committee on Finance, Request Approval of a Professional Services Agreement with Milestone C LLC to Provide Aerospace Engineering and Computer Science Curriculum. Uh, Michael Maranti? Are you there?
I think it's uh, it's a Darren thing again here, but uh I believe, I believe Mike is on, but I'm not sure if he's on mute himself or not, but uh uh Mike, obviously, he's, he's done some tremendous work in the CTE department for us. And so I'll take that on. Uh, uh, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, this is uh, this is for the amount of three hundred eighty-six thousand sixteen dollars and twenty cents. And this is to really expand. Um, uh, you know, we've committed to career pathways as a board. We've committed to career pathways in all schools. And so uh this is really uh to, to, to really beef up our aerospace engineering, software development, uh programming for students. Um, you could see under their contract, this is for not just curriculum. Um, uh, but also for uh physical pieces that go with the curriculum, uh which includes robots and robotics and drone technology for our students. We had a lot of uh, a lot of students interested in um, um taking those drone classes last year. We couldn't get this off the ground and running, but uh this, this, this uh would allow us to, to get those drone classes up and running for next year.
All right. Questions, comments? All right, I'm scanning for hands. Nothing. Okay, all right. Thank you, Darren. We will move on to um item number nine, which is actually.
Excuse me, Scott.
I'm sorry.
Uh, I think Mr. Brown had a, a question for you.
All right, go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
No, I just, I just noticed that Mr. Marati is, is here. I don't know if he wanted to say something, but that's fine.
Mike, Dan.
No, I mean, it's, it's gonna supply the district with um at the high school level a full year of drone technology courses, a full year of engineering courses, and a full year of software development courses, uh in addition to providing robotics and automation. Uh, that's already started um that to, he will to continue at the middle school level. So we're very excited about that.
All right, good. Thank you, Michael. Okay. All right, we will move on to item number nine. Uh, this is Committee on Finance. This is an FYI. Um, uh Monthly Expenditure uh Report for February uh twenty twenty-one. I know Doreen is there. Does anyone have any questions or comments? All right, I don't see any hands. Did I miss one or no? Okay, we'll move on to item ten. Uh, this is Committee on Finance. Uh, this is Will Clark, Clark and uh Chris Harmon. Okay, Request uh Approval of a Professional Services Agreement.
President Harvey?
Yes.
Item is going to be removed. It's not yet um completed with Corporation Council.
Okay, that's Karen talking to me, right?
That's me.
That's me, okay. All right, so we're not gonna, okay, so I'll just. All right.
So that's right, Commissioner Harvey, we do agree with that. We still have some work to do to get that right for you.
All right, thank you, that. Okay, so we will move on to item number eleven, Committee on Policy and Legislation. Um, ironically, this is scheduled for ten minutes. I, I kind of chuckled at that. Uh, okay, so the review of the revised and recommended policies from January uh twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, Policy and Legislation Committee Meeting, uh previous discussed on February fourth uh of this year's workshop, uh Commissioner Sweeney and Attorney Shaw.
So this is um, we uh Attorney Shaw had um presented this at the February fourth workshop. Um, I just wanted to bring it back as a refresh for everyone. Um, and Attorney Shaw is available if anyone has any questions about those prior pieces. But it had been so long in between that um I felt I need, I need to just bring it back so people could be refreshed. So if anybody has any questions for Attorney Shaw, um you could please pose those.
Okay, you're taking those questions now, Anne?
Right.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Okay, Commissioner Brown, go ahead.
Uh, so are we gonna be going, are we gonna be looking at each uh recommended uh change? Or do you just want us to assume everybody has read it and just asks the specific questions?
So on, on item eleven, which is um the points are eleven A through eleven H.
Right.
Those are the ones that Attorney Shaw had presented back in February at the workshop.
Okay.
So if, if anyone has any questions about those to pose those now. And then we have the, the section twelve is the much bigger work that has not been presented to the board before.
Okay, thank you. I get, I, I thank you for clarifying that. Thank you.
Yeah. All right, so any questions? I don't see any hands raised. Okay, questions? No? Okay. All right, Anne, let's move on then um to item number twelve.
Number twelve. I just need to bring up my screen. I apologize.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
So this is the work that the committee continued after the February session. Um, we dug into a full reopen of the bylaws um and made some suggestions um for changes. Um, what you see um tonight um are the suggestions that voted out of committee and are recommended to the full board. Um, it starts with the duties of the president. Um, and there was a change to item D. Uh, the current will read, reads the president or his or her designee will conduct orientation training for all new board members. It ends there. Um, the suggested added language is within thirty days of taking office. So this was to put some kind of a timeframe um around that um making sure that training actually occurred. Um, and then um item E is new, uh that is excuse me, conduct a board self-evaluation yearly and make pre-provisions for board member professional development. So um we added those under the duties of the um president. So any comments or suggestions on that one?
All right, any questions? Comments? I don't see anyone. Oh, oh, Commissioner Stengel, go ahead. Commissioner Stengel. No, I was just moving a paper. I'm sorry. I think I'm, my uh subject that I wanted to respond to has not come up yet. So I'm following along with the paper. All right, all right, go ahead, Anne.
Okay. The next change was at the Order of Business section. Um, and that is to um remove items um ten, unfinished business of preceding meeting only. And item eleven, other unfinished, new and miscellaneous um business. Um, these two items, as we discussed it um amongst ourselves and along with Attorney Shaw. Um, the, the board currently doesn't use these in um of a proper manner. Um, so we have some definitions of what those actually are now. And the request was made to remove those two sections. Um, there are alternate routes to accomplish what those accomplish. Um, and at this point in time, again, we're not using them in the manner in which um they are truly appropriate under Robert's rules.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I, I just would, I, I agree with the fact that uh these two categories were not really uh efficacious for our work as a board. But I'm wondering if we couldn't add something there for uh, you know, member some opportunity for boards to s- talk about, you know, uh recommended issues to talk about or some way for the board to have input i- at the end of the meeting. Uh, it could be new business or it could be um membership comments. I'm not sure what the other are. But I do think that there needs to be some opportunity for board members on the agenda to uh, you know, to weigh in on issues or recommend uh other uh topics to be discussed or so- some opportunity for board members to specifically weigh in and not, you know, maybe uh Tara, is there another form you would, uh Anne just mentioned, there might be another category that you've seen that might be more applicable here?
I have not, but typically a, a motion can be made to um form a committee or to um look into something. And so that, I think, can be made at, at any time um when there's new business that's being discussed. But I can look to see what other um boards have in terms of their template agendas to see if there's something else that may um fit what you're talking about, Commissioner Brown.
Okay, okay. I mean, I think in, in the other issue, I think it's already allowable, point of personal privilege, which people can bring up other topics. And I know we've done that in the past about, you know, we've attended the robotics uh you know, convention or, and just, just an opportunity to say was a great, a great uh opportunity. So that's always there as well, so. Thank you.
Yeah, if I could add also, you know, there is always the opportunity to speak with the superintendent or the president of the board to get something put on the agenda for discussion.
Yeah.
Um, so there are, there are other avenues to do that.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, any other comments, questions? Okay, don't see anyone. Uh, okay, go ahead, Anne.
Okay. Um, that was Standing Committee. Okay. I think I lost my page here. Hang on. Okay, now we're good. Okay. Understanding Committees, we have several changes. Um, I'm gonna start with what is currently item C. Um, which is um every report shall be signed by the majority of the committee and minority represent uh, I'm, I'm sorry, a minority report in writing may be presented. Um, and I rec- recommended um striking that because it's not something that we even currently do. Um, we're very good about um presenting at workshop and having a full-bred full-bread um discussion on things. Um, but this is not, it's in our bylaws and yet we never do it. That in all the time I've been on this board, we do not do that. So um, the recommendation was made and voted out that, that we strike that. Um, that was that C. Uh, so then a renumber of C. Um, we had a D that said all committee actions are subject to the approval of the board. So we renumbered that to C and added some new language. It says all committee recommendations that bypass the committee of the whole workshop to the regular meeting for a vote must be placed on the agenda off consent and in the form and substance of the committee agenda. District staff should be available to provide background and answer questions. Committee chairs should be mindful of controversial or contentious matters which should be heard and debated at workshop. So there was a lot of um discussion when we moved to um committees making their recommendations direct to the board meeting, the, the voting meeting and bypassing um the workshop. Um, to make sure that there was some vehicle for discussion about those things. So they just, just don't go to the board for a vote. Um, so hopefully this language will cl- clarify what that avenue is.
Any questions or comments, folks? I was expecting a little bit, few more questions or comments from folks. Nothing? Okay, go ahead, Anne.
Okay. And then we just re- relettered, renumbered um item E to um D on that. Okay, there is a change proposed under Committee on Policy and Legislation. Um, that uh section um says the committee shall report to the committee of the whole prior to board action. Approval of the full board is required for communications of positions on legislative issues on the board's behalf. Um, there is a section already in there that says all committees shall operate in that manner. So all committees should present anything they have to the board for the board's consideration um before, for the board's approval before they, they move forward. So that section is redundant.
Okay. Any comments? No? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, next section is Committee on School Personnel. Um, there are, are several language changes, um additions, um removals uh under item A, the original A um read, the Committee on School Personnel shall act as an advisory body to the superintendent um in the appointment and transfer of teachers and in all other matters concerning the teaching and administrative and supervisory corps. Um, so we added some language, the new language says the Committee on School Personnel shall act as an advisory body to the superintendent in the higher appointment and transfer of supervisors, high school and middle school assistant principals and building principals. And then we struck teachers and in all other matters concerning the teaching and administrative and superv- supervisory corps. In reality, the um board only has um responsi- responsibility, only has um jurisdiction, if you will, over um supervisors, the high school and middle school assistant principal and building principals. We do not have any um jurisdiction over the teaching force.
All right, could you elaborate a little bit more on that, Anne? What, what?
So the, the, uh, the, the teaching force or any, anything um below this supervisor and principal, vice-principal level um is purely in the purview of the superintendent. It is, the, the um, the board does not weigh in on hires and um appointments and transfers of teachers.
Okay.
So you will see, you will see on your agenda sometimes, you will see that um trans- it's, it's a notification um from the superintendent of transfers, um appointments uh to different programs as teachers and things, that's because it's in the, in the complete purview of the superintendent.
But the notification will be given?
Correct.
Right.
That will continue.
Okay.
That will continue.
Okay, questions, comments? Alright, go, anything else, Anne?
Uh, not on that section, but there is um section B, um we stroke, we struck that in its entirety. Um it says the committee shall conduct studies from time to time as may appear necessary regarding number of teaching and supervisory personnel required to achieve the goals of the system and the salaries and other benefits required to obtain and retain professional personnel of a high caliber. Such studies shall include consultations with the superintendent and other interests interested standing committees. The committee shall report its findings and recommendations to the superintendent for such use as he or she may require and forward transmital to the board. Um so, a rather long paragraph that says a lot of things that um quite frankly um in a legal sense, um in terms of our contracts with um our um teachers and staff um that Personnel Committee and the Board simply cannot do. It may have been at one time that that could be, but at this point in time, these, these are not things we can deal with you.
Okay, questions, comments? Are you raising your hand, uh? Okay, alright, just checking, go ahead.
I think this is the part where a, a language was added. Uh Commissioner Sweeney, if you could um clarify that for me about the committee may perform um other duties necessary to ensure equitable and diverse staff.
We haven't gotten to that yet. To that yet, there's, there's a couple of changes before that, yeah.
Alright, alright, I'm just waiting for that.
Okay.
If I wave my hand meantime, that's the one I'm waiting for.
Well, I'll uh just, you know, I can't distinguish between the two, go ahead Commissioner, go ahead Commissioner Sweeney.
Okay, so then we renumbered and created a new, a new section B, which reads the Chair of the Committee on Personnel or his, her designee attends interviews of applicants for the positions of supervisors, high school, excuse me, and middle school assistant principals and building principals as a non-scoring observer at Level One or as designated in the SAW contract. So there was some confusion and some language changes in this. Um but we wanted to make it clear where the representation from the Personnel Committee and therefore the representation from the board in terms of the interviews um was placed. So it, it clearly states that it's at Level One. It clearly states that it's, that the positions that it's relevant to our supervisors, high school and middle school assistant principals and building principals, those are the only place that the board has a place at the table. Um and in the interest of the fact that this is negotiated in through the SAW contract, um we added the language or as designated in the SAW contract in the event that that should change, that language should change.
Okay, any comments?
Got a question.
Go ahead, go ahead Commissioner Brown.
You know, Anne, uh, uh, if I remember, what level does the Personnel Committee attend and score?
Or Charles? Personnel Committee does not score.
Well, I've been, I don't know, I've been, I've been at.
Yeah, we don't score.
Uh, okay.
I have attended meetings when I was, maybe it was the Chair of the, the Board gets to go to the second level. So it's the, the, maybe that's the issue, not the Personnel Committee, okay, alright, got you.
Yeah, right, well, just to clar- just to clarify, uh Commissioner Brown and ju- jumped it because we did have a long discussion uh about this, um and that uh with the uh, the SAW contract negotiations, uh the Level Two was um eliminated. Uh.
Oh.
Right, so.
Correct.
So uh, and, and we did bring up that there was no representation from the board on those negotiations. So Level Two effective, I think in July.
Correct.
Okay.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah, I di- I didn't realize it either, because I almost fell out of my chair. Um effective with the SAW contract, effective July one, that Level Two is, is eliminated, so we're not in it. Um, you know, at all, Level Two does not exist after that date. So um I wasn't too happy to hear about that, but I think that begs uh that the next time that there is uh, we, we uh go over the SAW contract, that there is representation from the board um on those negotiations, they were supposed to be, but there wasn't. So that's it for Level Two right now.
It, so do we know why they wa- they didn't want re- board representation in Level Two or? I mean, was there a rationale?
Attorney Shaw, do you have any comments on that?
Certainly, I, I can tell you that during the SAW negotiations, the intent of the revised language was really to streamline the process. Um in addition, I would note that Commissioner Van Stone was part of the negotiation team.
He was.
Yes, and that we did present um an update in executive session while those negotiations were ongoing. Um and the contract does provide for the ability of the um Director of Human Capital to have other people sit in up the, at the initial level on interviews, including uh potentially board members.
Okay.
Yeah, because I think um it's something to think about, I, I, I I, I, I do think that the board should be involved at that level at some point and it seems like we were streamlined out, we were the only people.
Yeah.
So what other streamlining happened? Uh so I don't know, but I, I'm a little surprised uh to hear that there, there, there's no participation anymore. So to be, to be determined, I guess.
Yeah, and just my little two cents on that, in the, in the interest of, of trying to streamline, we're actually going to um that may um prolong it uh because uh we do vote on it, I believe, uh eventually, so that might, you know, um add more questions uh to the whole process, particularly with the candidates, so um you know, that, that may kind of prolong things uh once, once it reaches us, that we can ask questions and have more questions about who the recommenda- who is recommended. So that's just my two cents on that, but go ahead Anne.
Okay. Right, and then item C in that section was rewritten. The committee will review all new job positions and new job specifications for recommendation to the board. Um Dr. Ralphen in particular, his um really used the Personnel Committee as a sounding board when she's looking to present um new job positions and new job specifications. Um any revisions to job specifications or um moves that the superintendent, a superintendent would make on, in existing job positions is one thing. Um but new things um appear to move much smoother if it comes to Personnel Committee first, we're able to vet it. Um and I think it's much clearer when it's presented than a workshop and, and regular board meeting. Um so we made a recommendation to um add that language as well.
Okay.
And also on C is, is the piece that Commissioner Stengel's been waiting for. Uh the committees may perform any other duties necessary to ensure an equitable and diverse staff.
Okay. Commissioner Stengel, did you have uh, yes, go ahead.
Yes, I do, do. Okay, um, I, this, this um that we're talking about now is really delving into the weeds. I'm not really a weed person, but unfortunately, we all have to live in the weeds sometime. So I, I was looking at this and I was looking at what the Personnel Committee was you, was previously tasked with. And um I realized a couple of things. I spoke to this change in the committee uh, because I had concerns that the proposed language is limited both in its task and its scope, the way it reads now. Um the district has other documents which speak to the district's diversity hiring goals and their objectives. They appear in our mission statement and the direct district hiring process uh policy, they also appear there. The proposed edit is not the role or the purview of the Personnel Committee, I don't, I do not believe. I think the task quotes in, to ensure is assigned and is, and is reserved for our professional staff and our district teams. I know that the superintendent is on that and I trust the superintendent and I trust her senior staff who work on that. And I trust deeply the Human Resources Team as they strive to ensure that these goals and targets are met. Also recall that the board is periodically briefed on the progress of those targets. So I propose another replacement for that edit with a, with an edit that I wrote for consideration. And I would like to replace the previous edit with this um line. And it reads, can you? Oh, you can't do that, I was going to, I was gonna share my screen, but I can't.
We can see it, we can see it, Charles.
Oh, how come it looks backwards? It looks backwards, you can't see that.
Can you, can you read it?
Yeah, I'd like to read it, but.
Please.
I was trying to share my screen for experience. Okay, um, my line, the committee will endeavor to provide the necessary tools and resources needed to ensure that the district stated hiring goals are met. I think it's more, I think it's broader, I think that it, it, it encompasses more things and it's more in the realm of what a Board of Education does and not what it, what, what the superintendent is responsible to do. I'll read it once more time. The committee will endeavor to provide the necessary tools and resources needed to ensure that the district stated hiring goal, goals are met. And that's what I propose to replace the uh previous edit um after looking at it. I talked to this in committee, but I did not have the language that I thought would be, to prepare it with uh at that time. So that's um, that's what I, that's what I proposed.
Alright, Anne, could you read what the um, what the current, read that again, please?
The committee may perform any other duties necessary to ensure an equitable and diverse staff.
So we want to remove equitable, equitable and diverse.
Um.
That's what we wanted to do.
Uh it's, the whole thing is gone.
Yeah, the, yeah, he, he rewrote, he's suggesting a rewrite of the whole sec- of the whole piece.
Correct, I'm not removing word, just those words and going with the line, I have a whole new line.
Which removes equitable and diverse.
Well, it's not removing it, it's just that it's not there because I, my, in my new line. It says, a- as actually, some of the words are the same, but it doesn't do what you, what that other line does. The other line calls us to call, I think, call to task the superintendent or HR to ensure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. However, my line says the committee will endeavor to provide the tools and resources, that's what boards do, provide what is needed, money being one. Needed to ensure that the district stated goals are met. The goals have been stated, we want to make sure they're being met and we're going to provide those resources and tools that are necessary.
Okay, I would like to see this in, in writing, frankly, um what the proposed, what, what is current and then proposed. Um so can we have that? I don't know, does anyone else want to speak to that?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
So as much as I um appreciate Commissioner Stengel's rewrite, um my issue with this and what I had stated at the committee level is that I don't believe it's the committee's responsibility to do this. I believe it is the board's responsibility to do that and they do that through the evaluation of their superintendent. Because that's the superintendent's responsibility, make sure that happens. And it is the board's responsibility to hold the superintendent accountable to make sure that happens. It is in our mission statement, it is in our um value statement. Um it, it is in our hiring policies. Um and we as a board, our, our job is to make sure that our superintendent and our superintendent's team make sure these things happen. So I don't think it belongs in a committee, it, it should be the board's responsibility as a whole. And that, that's why I think that it doesn't even belong there, so. So there's.
Okay, go ahead. So what are you proposing then?
Well, so the way this should work is this is just a read. This is not change it, this is, this is the first read of what's being proposed.
Right.
So this should go to the next board meeting. And if someone wants to amend that section, they would amend it. And that amendment can be changing the wording, adding words, subtracting words, deleting, deleting it altogether. Um that should occur at the next voting meeting when this comes up.
Okay. Alright, does anyone else want to comment on that?
I just find.
Go ahead Commissioner Brown.
No, I think this is a really uh great discussion. And I do think that we have set goals, as Anne said, in other areas and policy and also in the strategic plan. And I think as a board, uh I think that's probably i- in the higher view that we could see these, these kinds of goals and benchmarks uh by, and I think further down there's uh require, it would require us as a board to review the strategic plan uh and so forth. So I think the intent is great and I think we can get at that through the higher level of the board reviewing the strategic plan and goals, so.
And Liz, that, that was added into the section that um Attorney Shaw had pre- presented back in February, so that is in there.
Right.
Okay, anything else? Okay, you don't, anything else, go ahead.
Okay, alright, so um we struck the language in E, D, I'm sorry, C. The original C, D and E, we struck the language altogether. Um I know you all have copies of it, you need for me to read through it, but it's. Um, I know you all have copies of it, you need for me to read through it, but essentially um, it is, it speaks to um uh the committee doing things um that either are not part of the current system or are actually not allowed for the board to do. They're covered by um legislation um that has come across over the years. These are pretty outdated sections here, um and we struck them in their entirety.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
Are any questions? Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Sweeney.
Okay, um, the next section that was um revised is the Committee on Finance. There is a section D that speaks to financial reports of all school entertainment and athletic events shall be reported to the Department of Education's Chief Operating Officer in writing within thirty days of the event and said officer may control the disposition of the same, provided that the Athletic Association of each high school may submit an annual financial report at the end of the school year in June in lieu of monthly reports. So very clearly a um description of a duty for the chief operating officer, but I don't see anything there that pertains to the committee itself, um, so we struck that.
Okay, yep. Okay.
Okay.
All right, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yep, and I think that's pretty much it, other than um again, um, we added to um the piece that um Attorney Shaw presented back in February. This was the piece I was just speaking with Liz about. Um, we added review annually Waterbury Public Schools' strategic plan, mission, vision, and core values to ensure fidelity. We felt it it fit much better under powers, purposes, and duties. Okay.
That's it?
That's that's it in terms of the bylaws. Um, we presented for you again um the appendix that we spoke about. Um, that's something that the that and the um and the uh. Yeah. I'm blanking for a sec.
That there with me. You're allowed that one time, one one meeting.
Oh, I'm getting too old, I need more than one.
You know, you know, uh, uh, speak, let me speak, let me just say something maybe that'll, it'll come back to you. Uh, my bit um really on the handbook is to say that we haven't voted on that.
So it's not, neither one of these is actually.
I would feel better.
Yep, so, yeah, proposed, and I apologize for not saying proposed. So it's a proposed appendix and a proposed um handbook. Um, these are works in progress, they are not actually part and parcel of the bylaws.
That's right.
So an appendix, until we know what the bylaws are, it's kind of hard to draft an appendix. Um, because the appendix is your explanatory for what's included in the bylaws. So we've made some suggestions here based on um some of the additions and changes that have been made. But that appendix is really a a work in progress and would need to go back to the committee. Um, and the same on on the handbook, um, it's a work in progress and uh not really the bylaws. Um, but just something that we wanted to propose for you and that the committee will continue to work on.
All right, good, good.
Okay. So what I propose for the meeting is um to present the changes pretty much the way they were here with the strikeouts and the red outs and the and all of that. Um, but also to have Carrie put together a draft of if all these changes go through, exactly what the bylaws look like, how they will read, mark draft um for the next meeting. And then again, um, it goes to, it goes to the board as a revision of the bylaws. It requires a two-thirds vote. And at that point in time, if someone wants to amend something that has been changed in the bylaws, then they would make a a motion to amend.
Good.
At that point in time, and then there would be a vote on that amendment.
All right, that sounds good. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney.
No, thank my committee, this was, you know, a long haul, um, a lot of work, a lot of discussion. And it's several very long meetings um that uh the committee really hung on there with. And I thank them all for their hard work and Tara Shaw, um, thank you for all your guidance.
Okay. All right, we shall move on. We're almost there, folks. Uh, item number thirteen. Uh, Committee on Building and School Facilities, Will, are you still with us?
I'm still with you. Um, these hopefully will be quick uh and painless. Uh, one is an outdoor event, just using a parking lot, um, Boy Scouts little flower sale, which we thought we could accommodate um with nice social distancing, which they promised. Uh, the other two um are things we've done before in collaboration with the HR department uh related to a civil service exam, this would benefit us as well as we pull off this particular list uh from time to time. And the tax office uh uh doing a tax auction, they had done one uh last month. We worked with them and the fire department on distancing and and how everything would work in the building and and the school, and that worked out really well. So they're, they've asked to do another, uh, and we'd like to accommodate that.
Okay. All right, any questions, comments? Okay, Will, uh fifteen, please, excuse me, uh fourteen.
I I think I hit them both there.
You hit them both, okay.
Yep, the two, the HR and the tax office.
All right, Will, just a quick question, um, and not to put you on the spot. Um, I received some concerns uh from outside um organizations regarding the use of um our facility, Reed School, and there was another school, I can't think of which school it was, um, that there seemed to be hesitation with uh panting uh future. Um, you know, they wanted to reserve the school uh to do something that they've always done every year. Um, are we hesitating, are we, are we holding back in our reservations, are we not uh appointing? Um, if if, because like she, I think she said that, you know, she normally does this for the summer, but she says there seems to be some hesitation.
Yes, there there is absolutely hesitation, and yes, we are hesitating. Um, and we're doing so because of COVID and we're trying to get to the school year healthy with the children. Um, and also because of your earlier in the agenda tonight, there are discussions going on about summer programming. Uh, we're actually meeting with city, with the Parks Department, with PAL, with the superintendent, the, there are summer school programming, that comes first. That's number one. So once that's all determined, then everything else flows from there. So uh whether or not we, and and how the COVID elements continue to impact it. So in those meetings, uh, we have city folks, uh, Health Department folks, Board of Education folks, all are in there. So uh we're focused first on academics and the summer school for our students. Uh, after that, it's then parks and and city uses that that might apply, PAL and so forth, uh which may in fact be involved in our summer programming uh use. And then we go out. Uh, some of these programs are still governed by the COVID restrictions. Uh, and many of the programs that you you're referring to, I think, uh literally cannot follow them. Um, so we have sort of put a halt uh on all those during the school year. And we're just trying to get through the school year. Our athletics programs are just these few community things and and city things are all we're doing. So no one's being distributed against, no one else is getting in. Um, and then we're going to look at, once our summer programming is determined, whether or not we can accommodate anything else safely. Because we do not want to compromise the summer school activity by bringing in other things that is going to make it uh an unhealthy environment and break the bubble, if you will. As things expand, hopefully vaccines uh go well and and so forth. And we'd love to get to the point where we're opening up uh further. But at this point, we are going very slow, we're taking all the requests in.
Right.
Um, and we're letting them know, you know, you will need to give us, you know, really good COVID planning. Um, PAL and other partners are really able to do that, frankly. Um, and some other folks just are not. So numbers wise, a lot of times it doesn't work for these programs, because if they can't pack the place and charge everybody, they don't want to do it.
Yeah.
And packing a place and charging everybody is not our priority.
All right, so.
We'll, we'll keep looking at it, and I probably, maybe the next board meeting, we'll probably have some more on summer school and and activities with the city, and then I think things will start to flow from there, assuming all the health pieces come into play.
All right, so so what what I would say to that is I fully understand you preach to the choir here, but um, that needs to be communicated because, because the question was, it seems like uh I think they said, well, PAL, it seems like PAL can do it, but we can't. Um, I think whoever's reserving or responsible for that uh needs to communicate that, or you need to put something maybe in writing or something like that so that it's communicated uh to the folks, because, you know, they, someone have been doing this year after year after year, now it's different. All right, so my my only question is to just say that.
Certainly, yeah, I'll certainly focus on that, I can guarantee you that I say that to everyone I speak to. I know Sandy McCaslin says it to everyone she speaks to, sometimes they just don't like the answer and they go speak to someone else. But we're very clear on exactly what the rules are. Um, and PAL, as you know, uh is, our children are engaged in PAL, in many cases, it's part of our school programming, so that's a little bit of a different piece. But we're taking all the requests in, I'll definitely make sure we're communicating consistently. And I am hopeful, I'd love to get back reopened and do things quote unquote back to normal, um, but we're not there yet.
Okay, all right, good enough. Thank you, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
All right, we have su- superintendent's notification to the board, any questions there? Questions? Going through A, B? No? All right, if not? Just make sure I'm going through everything, we are at a point finally? Okay, for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposition? All right, we are adjourned. Okay, um. I would like to go right into the special meeting, Dave, are you on?
In the perspective of the broadcast, you can go right into it.
Okay. Carrie, are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so Dave, give me a countdown, please.
Karen, you can just start the.
Just started, okay. All right. Welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education Special Meeting um on Thursday, April first, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, we will begin with silent prayer, uh followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Silent prayer, please. Okay, thank you, and we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, everyone.
I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America. And we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Justice for all, thank you, folks, we'll have roll call, please.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Vice President Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Nardozzi?
Here.
Commissioner Orso?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano O'Dorno?
Here.
Commissioner Stango?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Van Stone? President, President Madano.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. All right, so we will move on to item number four, Committee on School Personnel, Commissioner Stango, item four, four point, please.
Hey, item uh four point one, appointment of Principal of Reed School. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends the appu- appointment of the Deirka L. Thomasella as the Principal of Reed School effective immediately.
Second.
Respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second.
The second? Okay, just discussion, Dr. Ruffin?
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, it's an honor to recommend Ms. Thomasella as the Principal of Reed School. Uh, she has a unique perspective into the school, as she was instrumental along with Mr. Mendoza in all of the pre-planning and opening of Reed School. Uh, she is very um and caring for her school, for her students, for her parents and the community. Uh, has done an outstanding job as an assistant principal there. Uh, comes with a very good understanding of the instructional process and what's required for students to be successful in schools. And it's a pleasure to appoint her as the Principal of Reed.
All right, thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Any further discussion? Okay, we will vote, uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Stango.
Oh, Commissioner Stango, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, I just want to uh comment on and uh agree with Dr. Ruffin. I was at the interview, I did the interview for Dee, and I believe that it's a great choice for a great school, so I totally support it, and I wish her a very successful tenure. Thank you.
All right, any further? Okay, Commissioner Orso?
Uh, like Mr. Stango, uh, I was also in on the interviews and uh I think it's an excellent excellent choice, and I do wish her well for the future.
Very good. All right, any further comments? All right, I would just add that I was also in on the um interview as an observer. Um, and uh just to simply say that uh Reed School is very near and dear to my heart. And uh I look forward to the continuity of the leadership uh there at the school. She was there from the very beginning and uh um has done a great job. Um, you know, as a vice principal and um it's it's only that for her to continue on as a principal, so congratulations. Okay, can we have a roll call?
I believe Commissioner Hernandez had her hand up.
Okay, Commissioner Hernandez, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to know if she was on the uh Zoom meeting.
I don't see her.
Okay.
Okay.
She may or may not have been, but it would be um my intention, if it's okay with you, Commissioner, was to formally introduce her at a board meeting.
All right.
On the fifteenth.
That's fine.
Thank you.
I know she's, I know she's gonna be listening.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Carrie. Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Brown? Yes. Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Nardozzi?
Yeah.
Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano O'Dorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Absolutely, yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Um, okay, let us move on to item five, Committee of the Whole, Commissioner Brown?
Yes, uh. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, the Committee of the Whole recommends the request of the Superintendent of Schools to utilize the district's building located at what's one sixteen Beecher Avenue as the site for the International School with a focus on dual language, be approved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Oh, wait a minute. Discuss? Hold on, back to you, uh, Commissioner Sweeney?
So, um, Dr. Ruffin, I I I totally get the International School and I'm I I completely support that that um program. Um. I know we spoke and I told you about, you know, my concern with Chase and still the overcrowding over there, and I really thought that finally with this property, we were going to be able to give Chase some relief. So, on that piece of it, I'm, I'm disappointed, I, I have to say. Um, I had hoped that maybe we would look at Saint Joe's um and some space there, or some space in one of our um middle schools. I know these are very young children, so that becomes problematic. Um, but I, I, I support, I'm sure that you have the best interests of this district at heart when you present this and that location. So, I will support it, but I will plead, once again, to please, let's have some real concerted effort in looking at some way to relieve the overcrowding at Chase. Um, no matter what we do, we can't seem to get that um population down under eight hundred students, and that's really just too massive for that building. Um, and it's a problem that we have struggled with, we have not been able to find um available land in the East End um, that the community of, in those sections um did not come out in force um, to deny us um use of that land. So, we have to do something, and I don't know what that something is, but I don't want to lose sight of it. Um, so, again, with that plea to you, um, I, I will support this.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner, any further discussion?
Um, Commissioner, um, if, if I may add?
Go ahead.
Uh, I, I do hear you very clearly, and, and I do understand the, the importance of this for, for um you, Commissioner Sweeney, as well as for all of the board. Here, and, and I, I, I will elaborate as much as you want me to, but I can assure you over the next few months, the um, there, there's going to be a lot of discussion and dialogue around uh, a couple of things that will perhaps give this to the board in a systemic way that will allow us to stop piecemealing programs in the district. Uh, we will have an RFP that's coming out next week that will address a facility study, and the facility study is not just about enrollment, it's really to study the uh, uh, infrastructure of our buildings. Uh, the location of our programmatic, uh, uh, our, our vision for programmatic development in our district. And I think that's going to give us a real comprehensive plan on what we have in our existing buildings, opportunities with buildings that are perhaps, um, you know, uh, can be reconfigured, or uh, or uh, buildings that may be even adjoining that we're not using, that we could think of creative ways of utilizing it. Uh, I believe that we have to not only figure out what we're going to do with, with uh, with other programs that have outgrown their space, such as the Academic Academy, as well as Early College High School, uh, as well as our magnet schools, I think we need to start looking at how, and, and of course, the board's desire to have more pre-K eights. I think that a study of the entire building, the infrastructure, what is it going to take for HVAC? What is it going to take to really get our buildings ready so that regardless of the weather, we, we don't have to shut down or think about, you know, not having school so long during the summer? So, I think you're going to see that in this study. That's going to help us to develop a long-range plan of what do we need to do in the district for systemic growth. As well, we have an issue with pre-K and developing the pre-K center that's going to really accommodate the growth for pre-K. Uh, I think our numbers tell us that we have a growth for pre, pre-K, but the space is not there. So, this study, I'm looking at it being a comprehensive study that will give the board a roadmap of what we need to consider, and then eventually vote on for the direction of our district moving forward, I think you're going to find some solutions in that study. Uh, and I think we're going to be able to afford that study as it is a part of what we're doing for reimagining education, and certainly is going to be allowable during S R two. I think that's all the most of demand that we have, a rationale for everything that we're going to be doing moving forward. We are also going to be intentional about selecting students in this lottery that reside in the Beecher School area. I believe that we will see some, uh, because of the way that lottery occur, that we will be able to have students that, that live within that school zone uh, that can go to the school because they've applied for the school, that could possibly alleviate some of the distress on Chase and maybe even generally. And uh, as we move forward, and you know, after tonight, I, I think you will see that at, in the selection process, we will make that a priority. We're going to uh, place a percentage of students that reside in that, within the community, that apply for the community, to be allowed to attend the school in that community.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ruffin, any further comments during discussion? Okay, nothing, all right? All right, um, Carrie, can we do a roll call on this, please?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Nardozzi?
Yeah.
Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano O'Dorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Eight zero, motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, Commissioner Brown, item five point two, please. Commissioner Brown? You're muted.
Okay, one of these days we'll get this right. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee of the Whole, the Superintendent of Schools recommends the Department of Education's twenty twenty to twenty twenty-seven strategic plan, be approved.
Thank you, second, please?
Second.
All right, discussion?
Commissioners, can I add something to that?
Discussion, yes.
Uh, I think because of the, the huge changes that have occurred since March thirteenth of twenty twenty to the present, and with the forty-one million dollars that we are going to be receiving through S R two, and because of the additional fundings that we're going to be receiving through the next phase of the relief funds, and additional funding that we may be receiving for our summer programs, I would like for, to um, request to the board that you allow us to be able to continue to expand on the strategic plan, as that is the document that we're using to be able to recommit and to reimagine education. So, even if you decide to approve the strategic plan, uh, I ask that you, um, you, you use it as a document by which we're working against to come back with a revised document that is probably going to take us through the next decade.
Yeah, good, okay. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, don't see any hands raised, okay, uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition indicate by saying no? All right, the ayes, motion passes. Okay, uh, need a motion to go into executive session?
Matt, yeah. Vice President, can I make a comment, please?
Well, we're past the, is it related to what we just voted on?
No.
Okay, well, we have to stick to a special meeting, we gotta stick to this, okay, but we will uh, go into executive session, Ann?
Motion to convene an executive session for discussion concerning the appointment, employment, performance evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
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 The opposition? Dr. Ruffin, anyone else coming in, uh, is it?
Yes, Commissioner, I would like to request Tara Shaw and Juan Mendoza to join us.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Ann, would you, uh?
Motion to return? Yep. Motion to return from executive session to the regular order of business, no votes were taken.
Can I get a second? Discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposition? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Happy Easter, folks.
Happy Easter.
Happy Easter.
All the celebrations.
They say.